Okay, this is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. Adequate notice, this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press and Bureau of Ledger, January twenty 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 three. That notice is also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. The copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file with the Office of the Borough Clerk. Copy of the notice has also been sent to such members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include his statement in the minutes of the meeting. Before proceeding with the formal meetings tonight, I would like to say a few words to the applicants, their experts in the audience about the role and authority of the Fairhaven zoning board of adjustment. The board is a separate and independent municipal legal entity and it's limited authority specifically set forth in the borough ordinances and the New Jersey municipal land use law. It is quasi judicial in nature and the members of the board are unpaid volunteers appointed by the mayor and councilor. The zoning board does not enact the borough land use laws and regulations, the Borough Council does that. The zoning board does not enforce the land use laws of the Borough Fairhaven. This is their responsibility in the Borough Code Enforcement Office. This board deals with appeals for relief from requirements of the borough land use laws or denials by the zoning office. An applicant is never entitled to a variance, also known as an exception to the zoning regulations, but must meet specific criteria required under New Jersey municipal land use law and the Fairhaven ordinances by satisfying certain required standards approved. The board has no authority to waive these requirements. The burden of proof is always on the applicant to show that he or she is entitled to this specifically requested. The applicant must prove that if deviation from the regulations will advance the purposes of the ordinance and that the deviation would substantially outrain any detriment to the zone plan. Variances related to the use of land are not intended or authorized to run in temporary or unique personal situations. Roll call, please show.
Mr. Chesney?
Here.
Mrs. Banderla?
Here.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Thorpe?
Here.
Mr. Dr. Loffer?
Here.
My fellow?
Peter.
Mr. Vey?
Here.
Mr. Leader?
Here. Please join me.
By the way, this is a good idea, United States of America. To the Republic, which stands one nation under God, neither risk nor danger for all.
Okay, we have two matters on the agenda tonight, they're both deviations, it may take a little time. First matter we're going to hear tonight is the Ryan application. Ross, if you could have everyone step up that might testify, Mike Sodoma and Jordan Loesweiler. Thought I'd say for this morning's evening, any witness that's going to be testifying. Mike testified, Mike had a comment, please. Well, Tom, swear or affirm. For this evening?
Yeah.
You know, they have to do to call in and sit down, go back. I'm going to ask you to just follow a very, very simple instruction. Before you start testifying, please state your name to the record, so the witness has their own record, stun your last name, okay? Follow the directions of your counsel. We follow you. We follow the power. They mark some exhibits to say, hey. And then make a preliminary statement. Uh, Mr. Koda, before we go through the exhibits, Mr. Ridgeway is going to be recusing himself and he's going to find his way to the back of the room as he lives in four hundred feet. First of all, Phil, may I ask that you confirm that we have your opinion over this matter?
Yes.
Um, the exhibits. Uh, Mr. Boskow, A1, your cover letter. Initially submitted and received, submitted on the sixteenth and received on the same day. Application part A2, consisting of uh, part three, listed variances, statement of legal basis for the granting of variances, list of experts and good practice pay. A3, the only option for denial letter. A4, unit of annuals checklist. A5, notice materials, not dated, but uh, provided to cut two pages. A6, survey prepared by Tomics. Century dated, updated to July eighteen of twenty twenty three. Signed and sealed architectural plan. Uh, updated to August twenty five, twenty twenty three. We also have two, uh, mark A7, A8, also a package of eight images inclusive of two aerial photos. We're also going to mark uh, ZD1, the April twenty one, twenty twenty three CME letter over Mr. Rizzo's signature, as well as uh, CD2, August twenty one, twenty three CME review letter again over Mr. Rizzo's signature. And CD3, September fifth, twenty twenty three, CME review over Mr. Rizzo's signature. Uh, before we proceed. This matter was listed on the zoning board's agenda, zoning board's agenda on October fifth, twenty twenty three. On that date, applicant's counsel appeared, prepared to go forward, we could not leave the matter at that, thanks in time. Um. But we did, in order to proceed deem the matter complete by granting, at least taking action to tell the applicant that they've got to submit applications to the Monmouth County Planning Board, uh, Prehold Soil Conservation District or Monmouth County Bureau of Health. I don't think we took any other actions other than those ministerial matters.
Miss Secretary, I just want to point out, the survey I had, I stated September twentieth, twenty twenty three.
We have September twenty, yeah, we can keep the markings, A6, September. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Koda. Good evening, this chair members, the board returns me on behalf of the applicants, Dennis and Stella Ryan. The application before you this evening, uh, pertains to the property that's located at nine seventeen River Road. Single family residential structure, uh, which is in your R twenty zone. Um, and it's on the water, it's waterfront property. Um, the Ryans, the intention is to, uh, renovate, um, and, uh, do a slight, do a modest expansion of seven hundred something square feet to the existing structure. Um, the, uh, if you'll hear, you'll hear from the architect as we go through, uh, more detail with respect to the proposal, but it's essentially, um, an addition that is predominantly the rear of the home. And some inside, uh, you'll see as we go through the application, um, the, uh, the integrity and, and look at the front of the home remains intact. Uh, and that is intentional deliberate process, um, by Mr. Condors, the, the architect. Um, the, uh, obviously, as, as the board members see, there are a number of variances associated with the application, many of which are existing conditions. You know, we're looking at a significantly undersized lot. Five thousand and some odd square foot lot in the R twenty zone. Um, so, so bit of a challenge, uh, go, bit of a challenge for the Ryan event for, and for Mr. Condors. Um, the Ryan, uh, decided as part of this proposal, they're not going to, um, any, any tear down or, uh, demolition of the existing home, but rather make it a renovation to facilitate, uh, to facilitate their needs, to get them a functional three, three bedroom, three bedroom home. Uh, and so you'll, you'll hear all the detail about that. Um, and I think, uh, what I'd like to do unless the board has any questions, um, get Mr. Condors, and he's the architect. Um, and then we will have our planner, Andrew Janu, who will testify, uh, before the board with respect to the variances. Of course, the, uh, Mr. Ryan appeared as, as well. If, uh, the board has any questions, we'll see how it goes from there.
So, Mr. Boskow, the first thing I said, and you don't have to do it if you want Mr. Janu to do it, um, uh, or Mr. Condor to do it, that's fine, but I'd like to start with a list uh, of what the variances are that are treated by the application so that we can just sort of frame the discussion around those variances, and before we do that, I'd like to have a discussion about the lot itself. Um, because, uh, this is one of those lots that I think extends into the river. And so we have had problems in the past regarding calculation of square footage. If you're saying the lot is five hundred square feet plus, or five thousand rather, it, it sounds as though we've used the high water line with regard to the calculation of uh, the square footage of the lot, so I just want to get some clarification and just be sure that, um, that our engineer signs off on what we're starting with.
Actually, you just, point ten, let's use the measurements of the bulkhead, so very conservative calculation.
Okay, so your high water line is the riverside of the bulkhead?
Correct.
So the size of your lot is calculated to where you have an existing, um, bulkhead and so you're, you're in agree direct.
But if you do look at the survey, there's, I guess, four iterations on it, so we went back and forth in detail to get the survey to a point where everyone feels comfortable with the lot area. The, the, the true lot area between the lot lines is six thousand, six hundred and six square feet, but it's been reduced down to five thousand, one hundred thirty two square feet, with references to all calculations. Um, and that's because it's being taken to the bulkhead. Um, the survey provided dated September twentieth. Um, does show Thailand's parcels to the north. Um, I'd said the lines between the Thailand's, uh, Thailand parcels and actual property are pretty close to each other and it's hard to get an exact measurement of where they fall in line with each other, so using the, uh, the ordinance definition for this, um, the applicant took the conservative approach to, to go to the bulkhead. Um, and everything immense of that, uh, was calculated to go onto a lot area.
So that's where you get the fifty one hundred, that's where the sixty six hundred comes up because that includes area in front of the bulkhead where we may have a debate as title related to Thailand's one hundred.
That is correct.
Do all the board members understand what we just went through? Okay, uh, to be sure, please, early on, let's, let's just list out the variances and be sure that we.
Yeah, I'll go through them for you in the compare, but we have existing, we have existing non-conformities with regard to lot area, lot frontage, lot width, lot depth. Um, existing condition based only on the size of the lot. Um, there is an existing front setback non-controversy, fifty feet is required in the zone, the home sits today at fourteen point one feet off River Road and that, that will remain unchanged.
I'm sorry, Mr. Boskow, I believe you're actually updating the overhang trunk, so porch, the porch, so I did call that a variance.
Yeah, right, we're following the, the. So it's just going to stay at that.
It's the exact same location, but it's, it's actually changed.
It's exacerbated because now you're going to have a, an approach that comes.
Sorry, that's very, very, the front porch on the.
I think it's the same, it's exactly the same measurement, but it's just, it's different.
Same measurement of fourteen point one, fourteen point one.
Right, same measurement, but it's being exacerbated, so while it doesn't create a, a smaller setback, it, it, it creates a new variance.
Yes, that's correct. Just with respect to the overhang.
Okay.
There. Um, with regard to, um, new variances, um, we've, uh, I think we've had some other existing condition variances with regard to, um, the side setback for the air conditioning units. Uh, with respect to lot coverage, actually, there's an existing non-conformity, it's, it's actually improved again. Um, going from seventy eight point five to seventy point seven with removal of some patios that, that exists. So lot coverage actually is, 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 is decreased. FAR variance, we have, uh, we comply with maximum floor area, we just, but we do not comply with FAR, there's an existing non-conformity, not surprising that based on the size of the lot at, at, um, point five one nine with our proposal, with that little bump out on the side, the, the FAR goes, the proposed FAR goes to point six six five. We comply with the maximum. Uh, building coverage, um, lot coverage I said was reduced, building coverage um, in the R twenty zone, twenty five percent is permitted. Uh, what exists today is twenty six point three percent and the proposal is twenty seven point five percent. Okay, so we have new variances for FAR and building coverage. Also, number of stories, because based on the definitions in your ordinance, where we are, we are required to count the basement, the existing basement that's a half story. We are doing that and the attic, although it is uninhabitable by virtue of your definition, definition in your ordinance, counts as a story, so as a result, we're closing three stories where two and a half is permitted.
Mr. Boskow, could you, the building coverage, what number do you have for the proposed?
I have twen, I, the proposed is twenty seven point five percent.
Yeah, I have thirty five point.
There's, there's an error on the plan, which will be corrected, it's correct in Georgia's.
Okay, the plan counts the deck.
Right.
Whereas, my force is just the true building coverage. So it's twenty seven point four, ready?
Twenty seven point five.
And I just want to confirm, we've got a basement, the first floor, second floor, and then an attic.
Right.
Four, four level.
That's right. The habitable FAR, can you confirm that one more time? The floor area ratio?
Yeah.
Um, is point five one nine exists, point six six five is proposed.
Okay, that's different than minus one.
No, point five one. Point five two. It's locked up at point five two.
I'm sorry.
Point six.
If the point five one nine exists, point six six five is proposed.
Yeah.
So if we round to a point five one nine, it's point nine.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, I got it, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I, I have a, I have a, I'm going to just, around that list. Um, two more existing conditions, uh, the five yard setback is requiring fourteen feet, it is five point six feet on the east side. Um. All required parkings, this, this, there are all parkings required to be located behind the front yard setback line. There are two parking spaces, uh, right in front of the house, and there's, there's two driveways, so you can actually park, uh, you know, right off the road. In addition to the driveway that goes down up to the bottom to the garage. Uh, for the variances now, I'm also adding side yard setback again, but it's for the addition, it's nine point six feet where fourteen is required. And then, uh, the combined side yard setback, uh, needs to be twenty one feet and it's thirty five feet to both property lines. Uh, as you've heard, there's a basement, so the basement under the new definitions means that there's more than thirty inches from the finished floor elevation uh, to average anything great. Anytime we have a basement or that condition, it's going to be a variance now. So then itself, uh, is a variance because it's four point seven five feet. And that's created by the slope. The negative slope. The existing, the existing slope of the property. Um. The minimum setback from a river should be the greater of fifty feet or the average of the existing setback structure to butt in the river, um. Here, we're seven feet from the bulkhead to the, the second stair on the deck. And then the last one is it has to do with the three hundred foot repairing zone, there's disturbance within, uh, the three hundred foot setback from the river.
You've got one with everything. With regard to the side yard setbacks with Mr. Condors, it, it, at, at the beginning, if you could just kind of show us where the, the changes are to the side so we can appreciate what the issues are there.
Yes. Yeah, so you've already just, I'll give my smile, Anthony Honduras, C O N D O U R I S.
Well, and, and we've accepted Mr. Condors as an architect, many times, any board members, anyone accept me to the next one?
Okay, um, Mr. Condors, if you would, if you could just walk the board through the property and that exists, uh, today first, and then we'll go through what's proposed in part of the application. Sure, so, um, existing right now, uh, on the survey, you can see, it says existing two and a half story dwelling. That is, uh, that is remaining, uh, behind that currently, there is a one story extension that goes to the, to the rear, to the north. Um, and then to the side, there is an existing entry area to the east. And then there's a a vestibule on the west side, on this left side of the house here. So that is, that is the existing conditions. Um, and Tony, the existing conditions with respect to the record, the specifics as to the lot size and depth and all of that, just to put it into perspective, right? Just if we walk through, walk aboard through the lot area. Sure. And the, uh, lot frontage and the lot depth. Yes, so as, uh, Mr. Rizzo was speaking before, we, we took a conservative approach to the lot area, uh, we're saying that is five thousand, one hundred thirty two square feet. Uh, and we use the bulkhead for that, to take that measurement. So even though the lot that says a hundred and seven point nine six feet, um, we're actually about twenty feet short of that. Uh, because we're only going to the bulkhead. Uh. We have sixty one point one four feet of frontage, uh, we do have a shared driveway that straddles this property and the property to the west, pretty much right down the middle. And that driveway goes down the hill into, into the garage, which is on the basement level. Right.
Can I, can I just ask you about, how much land in front of the bulkhead is questionable? Uh, is there an amount of land there that, uh, perhaps couldn't agree with Mr. Rizzo as to whether it really was in or out? Um. Does, does our parent arguably go all the way to the bulkhead?
I think it goes beyond the bulkhead.
I don't think it goes beyond it, it's, um.
I don't even understand.
Yeah, I, I don't think I understand especially in our, so where does, where does the, uh,
Uh, hold the three hundred.
So your lot, so, so your lot extends into the water. The, the prob, the problem with those lies is that you've got Thailand's plains and you've got high water lines to observe in terms of understanding exactly where you actually own, and it's just this oddity about some of these lots on the navs.
Right.
My question is, you've conservatively taken the bulkhead as your line. If you were more aggressive, how much could you argue that you own, subject to the state's rights? I mean, is, is there ten feet there? Or was it just a foot and you just decided it was easy? I'm just curious as to whether or not you left, what you left occupied.
Well, the, the mean high water line is, and if I understand your question, uh, at the very back of the property here, um, I don't have a square footage of the balance of what, what's left over.
What's the distance from mean high water line to the bulkhead?
Uh, I can, let me get, because it's kind of, it's kind of angled.
Angled, yeah.
But that's not going to be consistent with the Thailand's maps, because you've got accretion on this side of the river, so you probably, let, let's not go down the travel.
Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to withdraw.
Okay.
Thank you for trying.
Yeah, cool. Okay, so where, yeah, so we were talking about, you went through the lot side, lot area, uh, you talked about the lot width. Did you get that? Yeah, lot width is sixty one point one four feet, the front, it kind of pans out a little bit toward the back. Right, and the lot depth of the bulkhead, I know it's, it meanders or, or, or is, is not. It's not straight, so again, on, on the closest point, um, I can, let me, let me get your measuring line.
While he's doing that, the, the, the single level, um, um, protrusions, if you will, into the side yard and the rear yard and on the other side, are they off of the first floor or are they off of the basement level?
They are off of the the, the main floor of the house, it'd be the first floor, yeah, yeah. Uh, so in the middle of the lot, we have about, uh, again, to the bulkhead, we have about eighty feet. Um, as you get to the, the part where the slope gets more narrow, we go down to about seventy five feet and then I'm walking from the front property line to the bulkhead. And then on the western most side, about ninety feet.
Okay, nine zero, yes. Thank you.
Okay, and let's, let's, let's talk about the existing home and then what's proposed in part of the application. Yes, so, um, maybe I'll give you a little history on, on how this whole project transpired, so uh, the applicant, Mr. Ryan, uh, he came to me, uh, a while back and had a, a design of a house that he was hoping to do, that he would work with somebody else on. Um, it would, it was the intention with to knock this house down and put this new house up, um, the new house was, um, quite modern looking, um. And, uh, I respectfully spoke to Mr. Ryan and did my best to convince him that that really wasn't an appropriate design for this lot, based on the context. And I thought, because I pass this, I pass a throw of houses every day when I go to work and it's a very low scale, very charming little strip of houses there, so I felt like it was important to keep the, the massing of this front section the same height and the same, same bulk. So he agreed, um, which is great. And we proceeded to do this as a, as a renovation rather than knocking it down and trying to break the house. So you can see in this rendering that even though this is going to be renovated, it is the same structure of the, uh, existing house, so the bulk of the additions are happening at the rear above this, uh, existing one story section. Uh, to quickly touch on the side setbacks, the current side setback is a five point six at the closest point, but that's the one story section that's existing. Our new addition is being extended vertically from that rear one story section and that's at nine point six, so that's where we're still need a variance for that, even though we're not coming any closer than five, five foot six. Five point six, excuse me.
Well, you're not exacerbating it five point six, you're exacerbating it nine something.
That's correct. Um, and, and the total square footage of the, of the addition counting? The addition? Yeah. Total square footage of the addition is seven hundred and forty five square feet, okay? Um, and we, we talked about, um, uh, what, what, the front, that, that front overhang, if you will, we, we were talking about that front setback issue? Yes, that's a, a very, that's an overhang that's actually going to follow the footprint of the existing porch. So it's not coming further or anymore to the size of the existing porch. Okay. Okay, so it's extending vertically. And then from, from, well, well, let's, let's, let's talk about the floor plan, so we can, sure, so we can sort of understand the, the sort of motivation about that proposed bump out on that side, on that, uh, west side. Right. Uh, so if you look at the first floor plan here, you'll see there's, uh, this dash line indicates the existing building. Um, we are proposing a two story addition on the west side of the house, you can see this thin strip right here. This built up two stories, it just gave us a little more room to be able to get a better floor plan on this side, and this is on the side of the house where there was quite a bit of room on the side setback. And, uh, and can you just give us the details with respect to the basement and the attic? Sure. In, in terms of the, the existing condition and functionality? Right, this is the basement, uh, the footprint of the basement is going to remain the same. Uh, you can see here there's a garage at the rear of the house, which you can pull into from that shared driveway, if you go down the hill. Um, but other than that, the foundation, well, the foundation footprint is not changing, um. The rest, we, you have the garage and the rest of it is storage, so there's no habitable space on that level.
And the proposal is not to change, uh, the usage of the basement?
Correct. Right. So on the second floor, uh, you're, you're coming in, we have, uh, an open fan in the back, the rear deck, obvious, for obvious reasons, that's where we want to be, it's got the view of most of the faces in the rear. And again, this is all existing footprint. The, the most part here, we are, there is a this building is kind of skewed, it's out of, it's out of square. So, uh, we're going, we're going to clean that up and square it off, so you do see a little bit of a corner here that's sticking out, that's the old building that we're going to have to square off. Um. So, you know, open fan in the rear, view of the stairs going up to the second floor, there, there's no, no access to the attic other than the full downstairs. The attic, attic will not be habitable. And, and the reason that the attic is considered a half story, because of the ordinance, is not square footage wise, right? It has to do with. I, I believe it's simply just because it's an attic, right, it's kind of a half ceiling. And, and that's not habitable, it's not finished, it's not. It is not heated, most of it has, but not enough evidence to be defined. Okay, um, with respect to utilities, existing facilities are going to, are existing utilities, okay? What about the, the existing grade of the property, right, that, that, yeah, is another challenge as well, right? Right, so we are complying with the, uh, not the number of stories, but we are complying with the building height, and the building height is taken from the four corners of the existing charter. Um. Using the grading plan, I was able to interpolate and get, get elevations for that, those four corners. And so we will comply to the, uh, the height. Okay. Um, and um, any change in the grading, probably in part of the application? No change to the grading.
Mr. Roski, if the basement exists and you're not renovating, and the attic exists, you're not renovating. Isn't there an argument that you've got a pre-existing non-conformity at three floor?
Well, I, you know, I think it was because there was a change in the, uh, ordinance definition, is that why, so I, I wasn't sure whether and, um, it takes a new variance relief, but, um.
Well, I don't know why it would be any difference in the lot size.
I mean, it should, I think it should be, uh, applied prospectively, although now we're in for an application, but, but certainly no change proposed.
Yeah, there's at least an argument that it's pre-existing non-conformity.
I agree. I agree. Um. Tony, now I see, uh, on the west side, you, you've got windows, but even windows in the, in the garage area, right, uh, on that lower level. Um, with that, that thing or? Uh, well, this, this is the actual, this is the garage door, you can see here on the rendering, we're coming out over the garage, you'll be able to drive under this piece of the house here to get into the garage, okay? This is the stair tower, um, which has been extended up. And, um, this is the second floor, that's the master bedroom. Okay, and parking is going to remain as, as today, parking will remain as it exists. Parking will remain as it exists today, um, there does happen to be. As as I mentioned, there's actually two. Parking spaces in the front yard, there's actually curb beds, uh, we certainly didn't want to. Get into a thing with the sidewalks and the county to remove those curb beds, so those will just stay intact.
Mr. Rizzo, excuse me, Mr. Rizzo, you pulled out the parking, but if the garage exists, there's none of the, three bedrooms is two spaces, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So they don't need a variance for the parking or or away from it, right?
Well, I guess I'll ask, it's my thing, Condors, um. There is going to be parking in front yards, whether they need it or not, they are in the parking area. Or it's intended to be parked.
I'm just saying, the 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 garage is there, the single car garage will certainly exist.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's got to be another space behind the setback then, no?
In the driveway.
In the driveway itself.
Yes.
So the driveways, well, the neck of the driveway.
Half the driveway.
There, yeah, sure. I don't think you're taking any credit for that. Um, how many cars can you fit in the garage and then how many can you fit within your property outside of the?
Well, if you're using RSIS, we can only fit one in the garage.
Okay.
Um. The thing is, because of the zone that we're in, we have a fifty-foot setback requirement, so the front setback is is way back here.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that's true.
That's 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 kind of a.
Oh, yeah, that.
I think it's the front yard.
It's the front yard.
Which is fourteen feet of that, but but let's get to the substance of it, you're no longer going to park in the front, is that, did I read that somewhere?
No, they are going to.
Are you keeping all that?
Yeah. We're keeping it, keeping it intact for sure.
Did they call out the twenty-five percent of the front yard for? Parking? More than twenty-five percent yard?
It's impervious.
No, it's just more than twenty-five percent.
It it is more than, it would be more than.
It is that existing condition, yes. No change to any.
No change.
Yeah.
And what about, um, Tony, from a design perspective? Um, materials and what have you?
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we're still keeping the the massing and the appearance of a traditional house with the gable roofs and, uh. You know, we are going to bring some more updated elements into it, but it will be a platform siding and and double hung windows with with roll and.
And a number of the homes, the walls, you know, along that that sort of street gate have been renovated, right?
They have, yes, yes.
So this is kind of a the hole in the donut.
Yeah, yeah. Um. And the overhang is going to look like? Like an architectural overhang with the?
With the cables?
Yeah, yes.
No, yeah, yeah. No living or having, it's associated with that. Obviously, um. And are you considered any storm layer here or, and if not, how would the site function? Versus how it does today?
Well, we are, we are making any changes to the grading. So. My my opinion was that we, it should just function as it's functioning today, uh, but we can certainly submit a grading plan. Uh, if it needed to.
But, um, I guess they're just charging that grade and then is it running off the absolute river?
It must be. Yeah. Some of it, uh, we could have a sort for for the curve that's going from eighteen to seventeen down to sixteen, some of it is going toward the street. But once you get over that hill, it starts working its way down toward the river.
All right, so it works today and you're going to maintain the same pattern?
Correct.
And and what's delta between what you have today and what you're going to have later, are you just, uh, basically going to have the same amount of roof, um, the building coverage, I don't remember?
Yeah.
You get more water to deal with or you get the same amount of that?
More water.
More water, and how much more?
Really, the the only change in footprint is really the, uh, there's one little section here of, uh, that we went out. So that's about, uh.
Six to sixty square feet, building coverage increased.
So that's the first floor addition, that's the expansion of the living space in the first floor?
That's first and second floor, that's that's the end of the house over here.
Fifty-nine square feet, yeah, building coverage and then. Then we we reduce lot coverage by how much?
Lot coverage got reduced from, um, seventy-eight percent down to seventy point seven, that's because of the pretty good sized patio here that's being removed.
And that reduction is positive.
So it's, uh, it's just such a limited lot, is there, is there room anywhere, if there was, um. If there was a desire to see this stay at least where it is now and put the water, the new water underground in some sort of a drywall or something, you have access to an area where that could even.
To 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 install a drywall?
Accommodated, yeah.
Uh, yeah, there's there's quite a few spots here that are actually, uh, grass that could be excavated.
Presently, no plan, not proposing to do it, room to do it, and we can leave it for now.
Correct.
Okay. What's what's being done to prevent runoff into the next thing, uh, both during and, uh, and, uh, both now and during construction?
Well, now it's just the house is as is, uh, during construction, we would install steel fences and. That's the protest, the typical way to to control runoff. Is that that plan? Yes, oh, yeah, yes. Or I, I don't know if there was anything else in your report that. That we didn't fit.
Um, so just so the board knows, I went back and forth, um, at least three times around the building three, so. Um, they did a lot to get the plans to this point, um, the one outstanding comment I have is regarding. Uh, blood zone, blood plane line, which I think we both took a look at, um, we agree that it's it's, you know, lower than with the building, but if you can just formally show it on the plan. Yeah.
Yeah.
What elevation?
Yeah, the elevation is one point six feet and that's this line you see at the, almost at the very back.
I believe, I believe it's it's like nine or ten. Blood plane line?
Oh, um, going across the property here, you mean?
Right.
Yeah, it's, uh, elevation ten.
Is it labeled? It's a dark green on.
Yeah, it's that. Green.
Okay. I guess can you just, moment? You can just reflect it on your plan that should, you know, should.
At least, of course, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I do, I'm sorry, guy.
Yeah.
And then any outside agency approvals, any, you started looking at what are these required?
Yes, we we did start, but we, that'll be subject to, um, plus if, in the event that the board approves the project, we'll. We'll go to the application.
What's your elevation of the bulkhead compared to the river side of the boat?
Elevation of the bulkhead compared to the river's side of the bulkhead?
Yeah, you stepped off the bulkhead, how far would you fall?
Uh, yeah, exactly. It's not, it's not, it's five, top of the bulkhead at about five feet and then the next way down is four and it just, so it's pretty, it's not, it's not that steep. Not not that much of a difference.
Ever flood?
Does it ever flood?
Yeah.
Uh, that I wouldn't know, I could ask the.
Your client will have to step forward and report it once this happens.
He's been sworn, he just has to identify himself, find his name.
Yeah. Brian, R Y A N D S E N I S.
Any flooding issues at the property?
No, um, man, it didn't flood during Sandy either.
No, it's out of the river.
Yeah.
Is that, you made a statement from the audience, I think that's why I pulled you forward, what was the statement that you made, just so I make sure everybody heard it?
That was it.
That was it, okay?
Yeah.
Good.
There's a photo in my letter, it's on page eleven, tomorrow I'll take a look, the rear yard. Really don't even see the bulkhead there, so it must be, you know, there's titted vegetation or. It's just very small.
When you say your letter, you're referring to ZB three September five twenty twenty-three?
That's correct, yeah, thank you.
I I have a couple of questions, so the, um, the houses immediately to the east and the west are actually pretty far from this house, right, you're not. You're not snug up against your neighbors on either side.
Right, I I have these dimensions, they're plus or minus, but the distance from this house to the structure on the west is plus or minus forty-two feet. And then to the structure to the east, it's plus or minus fifty feet.
Okay. And with regard to the basement, there's there's this garage. Put right in front of the river, but everything in the back is shown in storage, is it heated, is it cooled, is it going to be finished or used in any way at all?
It will not be.
It isn't now and it won't be later.
It will not.
And and did we calculate the garage part of the spark plug to the basement?
Not the garage, but everything else on the basement.
Your entrances are clear, I'm not to pull out?
Yeah, so, um. There's crawl spaces which were accounted and the garage wasn't counted, but everything else on that floor was counted. There's an image on, uh, top right of the cover sheet. Page, page one of architectural plan, and that shows the area that was counted. Where it's where.
So the extension on the first floor is a total of fifty-nine feet, which is new foundation, that's brand new, exactly how. Right, right, on the west side, how how deep is that and and how long is that?
I'm sorry, the 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 rear addition you were saying?
First floor addition.
On the way. Yes, this addition here to the west, seventeen feet in this direction and five feet and from east to west.
And that's the only expansion of the footprint of the house itself?
Correct.
Okay, and on the second floor, the addition is entirely over existing structure and that effectively doubles the size of the second floor, correct?
Uh, effectively.
Plus or minus?
Yes.
And there's no other, that's it, the the two additions, two floors, that's it.
Right, well, this stair tower also carries up as well, so that's, if that's sitting on top of an existing, there's no difference.
And that front little overhead.
And yes.
And then the decks in the rear, there's the two decks.
So what sort of analysis was done about how this house would look if it were in a zone that were more appropriate, given the size of the lot? You're in R twenty, this lot has no business being in R twenty, that creates a lot of the pre-existing, um, conditions, um. But if you go down on R five, you're looking at twenty-two hundreds per feet, pick the basement out of the equation, but, you know. Help us, help us understand how this would look if it were in a different zone relative to the standards.
Uh, well, we 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 thought that this lot was sort of between the R five and R seven point five.
Okay.
Zone. Um, your seven point five gives you thirty, thirty twenty, I guess.
Yeah, three zero two zero.
Yeah, right. So and then the floor area, area ratio in the R five zone is point four. So. We we are not in conjunction with that, we're over at point six six, so.
Let's just deal with that square footage. I'm just trying to see where you get thirty, where, it doesn't look like thirty-four hundred square foot a house.
Well, because the basement.
Well, we have to count the basement.
Uh, the basement's in, the basement's in the existing calculations as well, so the delta too much you have and where you're going is is right, although I thought I saw some stuff that. It showed older, but maybe it's business plan's turn.
Yes.
But I want to go back to the R seven five, so if you were in R seven five, if we exclude the basement. Um, what what are the, what's the calculations for footage of floor one and floor two with the addition?
Floor one and floor two would be, uh, sixteen, I'm sorry, excuse me, twenty-six, seventy-five.
Total.
Yes.
So if you were in R five, you'd have a twenty-two hundred square foot cap, you'd be over by four, and if you were in R seven five, you'd be a thirty-twenty cap and you're about four hundred on that.
We'd be on it.
Things put right in between.
That's correct.
And what's the ratio on R seventy-five?
You what, you say four?
Uh, R, no, that's R five, R, R seven point five is point three five, yeah.
And you're at six six.
We are six six five.
Six, but that includes the basement once again, if you pull that out, do you know that off the top?
Um, I could, I could, I don't have it, but I could tell you real quick.
This also includes a conservative lot area too.
Understood.
Yeah, we've got some extra dirt, wet dirt.
Well, it's sand.
And our size, it only goes one, you can only go one.
Well, I, we haven't gotten into the setbacks, so that's my next question, I don't, they can't.
And our solid forms are fair, I'm getting point five two.
Yeah, point five two.
And forms are five?
One sheet. Was it fifteen and five, isn't it?
Well, tell, tell us, Anthony, how how would it sit on on an R seven five lot relative to the setback limitations? The front.
Now, there are setbacks in your seven zone are seven and nine. They require setbacks.
So you'd be short on the one side.
You'd be short on the one side, but the part that we're constructing is is conforming to that, the addition.
Yeah, because you're not going over your one story to the east, you're going inside of that, so your additions would conform to the setbacks for our seven five.
That's correct.
And what's the ridge height?
Well, it varies because of the, uh, so a lot, but it's it's thirty-two feet, based on the four corners of the existing.
So ridge height from the front, can do we?
It's twenty, uh, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven feet, and that's staying the same.
Jordan, you agree on on averages, it came out spot on thirty-two?
Fifty-one.
Yeah, thirty-two, but.
Yeah.
Thirty-two what?
Thirty-three.
Okay.
It's a lot of that, a lot of the work, and we thank George for that, a lot of that and George for bringing the difference.
What what did change in the plans during the development of them, I I know you got, the ordinance changes, I think. Came up in the middle of the design, but were there other things that you wanted that you pulled back that you haven't asked for tonight? Or is it a matter of getting the numbers right?
Well, I know, and way back in the beginning, it was actually going to be a new house, you never saw that. But, that's right, that's true. But I don't, I don't believe, I think this, there weren't too many changes to the plans since the one that you saw.
Okay.
Just again, just some adjustments.
Getting the numbers right.
Yes, and adding, affirming what is included, what wasn't. Yes, and then adding quite a few dimensions that Mr. Rizzo asked for, which is great, we we really got everything on paper, so.
And in terms of the change to the ordinance, it affects your numbers because it affects your basement. Were there other impacts on the design or the result that you have here tonight that that are derived from changes to the ordinance?
No, there are not, we we actually could have, because now the ordinance allows addicts, we probably could have done some kind of addict, but. Uh, again, that would have been, still been a variance for this number of stories, but.
The attic's, the attic's free.
Yeah, well, right now it is, yeah.
No, 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 what I mean by that is the attic doesn't count if it's just.
Doesn't count a square foot.
So it's 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 out of that, but but there's no proposal to.
There's no proposal for that.
What you got, Anthony?
He's here, I was just saying, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Condors? All right, let's have Mr. January say a favor.
An area here, I will have some context to this. Excuse me, hey, Mr. Chair, Mr. Condors has another hearing, um, elsewhere?
He's so popular.
He's a popular guy. I didn't know if we would want to open up to the public for questioning, Mr. Condors.
So so what we can do, Mr. Roski, is we can do that. If for some reason, after he leaves, there's a question that comes up, it can only be answered by him, we'll be stuck, but to avoid having that occur, if you'd like to open for the purpose of any, any, um. Anyone in the audience has a question specific to Mr. Condors, not the application with the.
That would be great.
Okay, so, um, what we're doing right now is we're going to invite anyone that has any questions specifically for Mr. Condors. With regard to his testimony in this plan, because Mr. Condors is turning into a pumpkin and won't be here, uh, when we get to the public section, so. If anybody has any questions, uh, from Mr. Condors? All right, Anthony, I hope it's wrong, so you'll make it.
It'll settle.
Yeah, sure, I can. Okay, sorry about that.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Andrew Janu, J A N I W. I'm a planner on this matter.
Okay.
Oh. I I believe, Mr. Janu, you you testified before this board before, have you not?
I have.
And you've been accepted as a, uh, an expert in planning?
I have.
Any other skill sets you'd like to tell?
Uh, no, I am professional planner and, uh, I'm a peer for this board and I'm currently representing several municipalities, including Borough Cartaret, Tatchell, Livingston and Borough Three.
I mean, anyone have a question or or problem accepting Mr. John as a, uh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. All right, uh, Mr. Janu, if you would, you you visited the site, correct?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and you reviewed the plan and the local correspondence and everything that was submitted as part of the application, correct?
I have.
You you reviewed the borough ordinances and the master plan and, um, all of that.
And and the history of the property as well.
Correct, so let's go through the, a little bit, let's go through the zoning of the property and then, uh, the area from a planner's perspective.
Correct, so the, uh, the property is in the R twenty zone, this requires a twenty thousand square foot minimum lot. Permit single apartment homes, uh, community residences, family daycares, municipal facilities and the like. Uh, this is a permitted use within the district, although the lot is severely undersized for the district. Um, and you can see from the aerial, uh, who's.
Excuse me, yes. Mark, Mr. Call back, but I would like, my apology, we need to, uh, mark this exhibit as. A nine?
Should we go ahead and mark them all?
Sure, A nine is the area. Is there a date on that?
Uh, this is, uh. There is not.
It's about today.
It's a twenty. It's a twenty-twenty-two Monmouth County near map area, uh, specifically.
Four-ten, twenty, twenty-three, four.
That's the day we prepared it, that's the day it was downloaded, but it's a twenty-twenty-two image.
Okay, twenty-twenty-two image, thank you, it's great.
And, and if you have another.
Uh, I have a photo board, you cited, uh, there are four photographs, uh, both slide A. Call this A ten A. Uh, existing home and neighboring homes. The back of the board has, uh, two photographs of the neighborhood. As well as, uh, tax map highlighting the property and a nineteen fifty-seven aerial depicting that the configuration of the properties, uh, adjacent. That's there today.
May I ask you the data of the tax map again, please?
Uh, this tax map is. I put a solid cut off on the copy, uh, I'm sorry, June, June twenty-fourth, nineteen sixty. Occur? No, this is the historic tax map, showing that the lot.
Nineteen six zero?
Nineteen six zero, correct, thank you.
Okay, sorry for interrupting.
No, my, uh, I was referring to the aerial because it, it protects the configuration and context of a lot, you'll see it's. It's actually at a pretty unique, uh, location within the community where it's. On the south side of an oxbow of the north of the Nevisink River, and it also has a point where, uh, the road kind, kind of takes a bend in and it creates essentially. A very, very narrow strip of improvements. Which if you take a look at the, uh, the historic tax map, that accentuates, river comes in, the road sort of bends there and results in exceptional narrowness, uh, or lack of depth of those lot.
Can you speak to the, to the lot itself? Uh, curious about the yellow line, the bulkhead. The, the tidings thing we just discussed, can you help the board understand how you understand, uh, you know, why, why the lot goes that far out?
Certainly, so the, the, the outline of the lot is to the mean high water line. Um, and I was essentially following what was, uh, along the tax map. Uh, the bulkhead line, we can kind of follow with the neighbors, cuts through this portion. And then there is a drop off here, um, it kind of slopes down and then levels off as you hit the water line. Mean high water line would be located just around this area here.
Inside of the yellow line.
Inside the yellow line. Or just about at that yellow line.
So. I, is there an argument that the lot is larger than the applicant has, um, has parked tonight at fifty-one hundred square feet? Or do you agree that everything on the other side of the retaining wall is not owned by the Ryans?
Uh, actually, I do believe it is owned by the Ryans, there is some utility to that lot, uh, again, we were taking a conservative approach, not wanting to. Not to argue that point before the board, uh, we said, use the more conservative calculation of lot area in terms of. How it's configured today and how it's used today.
Okay.
Okay, and Andy, you were going to go through, uh. Existing zoning and, and go through the, uh, yeah, so the area and, uh.
Right, so just, uh, the home itself dates back to, or to your tax records, to nineteen twenty-two, when it was constructed and was. Exists substantially similar as to that time, and there is, uh. An aerial image from nineteen fifty-seven. Which depicts a footprint of the home, that you can kind of see where the back, uh. Kind of flattens out, that's the area where we're putting that addition, so that footprint is substantially similar to what it was in nineteen fifty-seven. And it appears to date back to when the building was originally constructed, foundational seems to be original. Uh, the home does have a basement, does have an attic, so technically, uh, to your point earlier, is. An increased story home, a pre-existing non-conforming condition, but we are, uh, essentially standing out on the second floor, which. De facto increases the attic by what, by whatever roof area goes over that area, but the footprint of the building itself stays the same. Uh, the first floor addition is actually going to be an overhang over the garage, it does not have a foundation to it. So while it intrudes into the side yard, it doesn't do so at the ground level, it's, that intrusion is at the first floor level. And that's similarly depicted. It's over. The upper right-hand corner, this is the existing garage, because this is where that overhang will occur. And this stair, this will be the stair tower that goes up, and this will be. Filled in on that level, and then the addition will go on top of where this roof line is. And this is the front, uh, elevation of the home. See, there is a little bit of a peak overhang over it, that's largely going to stay intact, with the exception of that little porch covering that, uh. Anthony spoke about earlier. And just to complete the assessment here, this is the home that's located immediately to our west, it is the home that we share the driveway with. And this is the home that's immediately to our east. I believe Anthony gave you the dimensions of the separation. Looking at the area, you can see, and the separations are somewhat substantial, they're not in any way, shape or form close together, and that's also depicted. In the top two photographs here, this is the home, guys, looking towards the, this is our structure here, and then to the east. This is the home, east of us, that are replying, you'll see the roof lines were also very much consistent in terms of height and configuration. So, what, what's being proposed is really maintaining the character of the front of the home, uh. All the improvements are essentially to the side and to the rear, in that envelope that the front will protect. Um, and that was intentional, and we heard Anthony's rationale behind wanting to renovate versus build new. Uh, it maintains the character of the neighborhood, it maintains, it maintains the character of all those facades, but it is. Uh, somewhat very pleasing when you drive by and look at it, it's, it's, it's not new, it's. Older construction and, and it looks, has a lot of character, and I think Anthony did a great job maintaining that. As well as tucking away the improvement so that doesn't, uh, substantially increase any massing that would be visible as you combine the whole.
Do you have any sense of the size of the houses to the east and west?
Relative to what's. Looking at the tax records and, and it varied, in, in terms of livable area, they're very similar, I would think, in a few hundred square feet of the hill.
Uh, what, what is the existing mature vegetation and, um, what, what are we going to lose, um, during this project?
So we're, uh, we are decreasing some of the patio area, which will actually create an opportunity, but, uh, the. I think it's really going to be kept to a minimum because we're not creating any new foundation area, we're actually removing some impervious coverage. Um, Anthony? Do you foresee any reason to remove any of the vegetation on the front of the property?
Not, not at this point, no.
No trees are coming up.
The first.
Yeah. Again, it's all over existing, so, you know, other than equipment, um, needing to come around, we have a driveway on one side and this. With the example on the other side, we've got to work something out in order to access that, uh, across the back of the property, but. That's existing patio that'll be, uh, intruded upon anyway.
And those, the, the houses on either side, Andy, those are, those are on the underside lot as well, right?
Yes, yes, that, those are, they're slightly larger than we are, but not much, they're certainly undersized for the district.
Okay. So let's talk about the variances.
Okay. So let's start with the FAR, and again, we're using the conservative, uh, fifty-one hundred and thirty-two square foot calculation, so, uh, the. R twenty district permits point eight, we are currently at point five one nine. Uh, we are increasing that to point six six five, and that is because we are adding a total of seven hundred and forty-five square feet. There are fifty-nine square feet that are be added, being added to the first floor, uh, family room, that'll be the area that is protruding out over the garage. And the second floor, the master bedroom suite, which goes over that first floor element, will be roughly six hundred and eighty-six characters. The increase is seven hundred and forty-five square feet, vaulted rear and portion to the side. Um, we are, uh, undersized for the lot area, we, uh, have sixty-one point one four feet of frontage, or one hundred feet is required. Our lot width, just slightly back, is sixty-two point nine, where one hundred is required. Our lot depth, again to the vault head, is one hundred and four point five, or one fifty is required. Uh, minimum front setback, fifty feet is required, uh, fourteen point one to exist to the porch, and. That fourteen point one will be maintained by the porch and the overhang of, uh, being added to the area along the porch. Uh, minimum side set, setback of fourteen is required, and we have five point six to the east side. And then nine point six, uh, is on the east side addition, so addition to follow the footprint straight up. It's being expanded upward, but not outward.
You have nine six, not the addition.
Yes. That's correct. Uh, combined side yards thirty-five is required, twenty-one point three exists today, twenty-one, uh, is proposed. Uh, parking location, parking is prohibited in the front yard and is limited to twenty-five percent, we have two, uh, existing parking spaces. Uh, on the front that are proposed to remain, there are. Aerial. Parking here, here's on either side of the home. Uh, minimum side yard setback for an accessory, ten feet's required, the existing, uh, air conditioning units are at seven point five feet. And that is along the eastern property line, and that is the property line that has the greatest distance to the neighbor. So if we're looking at separation of the homes, that's, that's the, uh, the greatest distance between homes.
It's an existing condition, are you adding a new condenser?
No, we're, that's.
I believe there's, no, there's. At least in the survey, it looks like there is one today and two proposed, so.
Okay, on the, on the east side.
We are pretty worried.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, we are, so they, they will both be at seven point five.
There's one there, and we're at anyone, or there's, uh, there's.
You know, I have there. There's one, one today.
Could be, and we have, we have, so we have a second one proposing.
Right, but, but the lot line on the side isn't straight, um, it, it veers off, so the second one is set back further than.
Right, because it veers out, right.
The existing does or doesn't conform?
Does not.
Does not. Second one will also not conform, but will.
It'll be, it'll be an improvement, it'll be a set further back, but not, and I want it between seven, it'll be between seven and five. And seven point five feet and the ten feet does comply, I think, so.
And, and Jordan, is the siding of the second one appropriate? I mean, are, are there any other better places?
Neither, next to each other.
A maximum lot coverage, thirty-five percent is, uh, required as a max in district, we are at seventy-eight point five today. Seventy point seven is proposed at the seven point eight percent reduction, again, that's calculated based on the fifty-one hundred and thirty-two square foot.
So, so what do we know about that? Because I, I know, I can see the house has been there an awful lot of times, but boy, you certainly have a lot of lot coverage, and I know you're improving it. Uh, how did we get to this point? Do we have a history of permits and other variants in subdivision?
Those appeared to have probably predated, there is, there are some papers that are in the front that have been looking at historic photographs and aerials, appear to have already been there. Uh, the patio to the back, I cannot date, and I could not find any permits related to those.
Any history of, of any subdivisions that created a smaller lot?
Uh, again, this was created prior to nineteen twenty-two, we couldn't find anything, nineteen sixty was new, it was tax map, I could locate those lots, if we're figuring as they are today.
Real questions, how about in R twenty?
Well, I think it's just because it's on the river.
Yeah, and, and it is one of the pinch points in the R twenties, and you do have substantial setbacks from the river on either side of this, but. As I mentioned, the unique situation of the road converging in, your river outspilling in, uh, it did create that pinch point. That would leave, oh, building coverage, uh, twenty-five percent permitted, twenty-six point three exists, will be at twenty-seven point five. And that increases the fifty-nine square feet, uh, along the western side, and again, that's not footprint, that's actually the overhang over the garage door. Uh, maximum principal building height, two and a half stories permitted, three, uh, exist and, uh, will continue to remain, so that's an existing condition that we are expanding to the rear. Uh, finished floor elevation shall not exceed thirty inches above the, uh, average existing grade. Whereas our finished floor elevation exceeds the grade at, at four point seven five feet on average.
You're not changing the grade?
We're not changing the grade, that's existing condition. Uh, minimum setback from the river shall be greater than fifty feet or the average of the existing setback of structures on a budding river property. However, in no event shall the required setback be more than seven, seventy-five feet. So the proposed dwelling is set back seven feet from the face of the bulkhead along the river. Um, so we do need relief, that's again, an existing condition, and how the home is, uh, created in relationship to not only the river, but to the bulkhead. Uh, there's also, uh, thirty dash thirteen B, new disturbance for projects or activities in the repairings though, established by this section may be allowed with the zoning board adjustment review and approval variance. Provided disturbance proposed to be located on a pre-existing lot prior to August ninth, two thousand and ten. And there's, uh, sufficient room outside the repairings zone for the proposed use otherwise permitted by the underlying zone. Uh, there's no other reasonable improvement alternative, again, it seems an existing condition that, uh, we, we are located within three hundred feet of the repairings zone and. But frankly, that three hundred feet puts us well on the other side of river road.
Uh, and I think that is the list of variances that I have.
Right. And you mentioned, uh, I, I don't know if you mentioned, Andy, about, um. We, the proposal does comply with the maximum.
Maximum floor area, right, uh, the maximum floor, right, actually, floor area would, uh, be four thousand one hundred and forty. Whereas we're at three thousand four eleven, including the basement. I believe Tony, uh, mentioned without the basement, we have two thousand six hundred and seventy-five.
That's right, that's right.
Um.
And you reviewed the master plan as well.
I did, I did, and the master plan really, uh, not only the master plan, but the two thousand five, two thousand sixteen reexaminations. Um, talk about not only guiding appropriate development, but maintaining the character of the community. And I think that's what Tony, uh, testified to very adamantly, that when he was. Approached about potentially doing a new, uh, new project here and new construction. Uh, I believe appropriately guided our client to consider renovation and expansion of this home. Uh, in such a way that it wouldn't be intrusive on the neighborhood, that it essentially wouldn't create any visual impact on the neighborhood, it would maintain the character of the neighborhood. I think we accomplished that, I think that's very much consistent with your, uh, standards. Uh, albeit, we are in violation of the FAR standards, that's a relationship to the size of the lot. The, as we went through the exercise earlier in terms of how it relates to the R five and R seven five. I think we are right in the middle, and I think, uh, when we look at scaling the home, that, again, not counting the basement area. We, we are appropriately scaled for the size of the lot, albeit we're in a zone that we're significantly undersized for. Uh, we also, for the purposes of this board, have to show that we are, uh, consistent with the objectives of municipal land use law. That means that, uh, no variance can be granted just for the benefit of the applicant, there has to be some public reason, some public purpose for the variance. For some benefit to the public, and I believe that there are two that, uh, we. Uh, promote with this application. Uh, the first is to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses and open space, both public and private. According to their respective environmental requirements and needs of all citizens. What we're doing here, I think, is, is a tasteful, uh, renovation and expansion of home. What we're proposing is, it's a three-bedroom home, it's by no means, uh, a mansion, which is what FAR is intended to control. It's, there, there are reasonably sized bedrooms, the two front bedrooms will not be altered, a master suite will be created for the back. It brings it up to more moderate standards, terms of livability and expectations for closet space, number of bathrooms in a home. And I think this type of addition will preserve the character of the home, and along this called shelf life, uh, as opposed to it being a tear down and a rebuild. Uh, we also promote item M in the MLU, which is to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities, shaping land development with the views of lessening such. Cost and such development for a more efficient use of land. Again, I think we're on point with that, we are renovating a house, it's certainly more cost effective, uh, than a tear down, but it's also something. Uh, that is a more efficient use of the land, creates less trash, first of all, when we talk about the green aspects of it. But, uh, again, when we're looking to preserve the character of the neighborhood and we're looking to keep the context of the neighborhood. Because this is an unusual portion of, of the R twenty zone. Uh, I think we're on point with that, and I think it is an efficient use of, of the property, given all the restrictions it has. Um, and when we look about, uh. All the configurations and what we're doing to light air and open space, really not doing anything that's significantly more intrusive than what's already there. The house is existing, um, the improvements are going straight up into the back. Uh, we're honoring the setbacks, uh, but for a small deviation. Uh, and it's all, it's, again, it's all to the rear and, and the house will continue to read, uh, as that kind of cozy, uh, historic house that it is. That brings us to variance relief, so with respect. That brings us to variance relief, so with respect to the D four, that is an F A R variance, uh and unlike a D one use variance. The standard uh is what's known as the Coventry Square, I mean, we have to discuss the impact of the deviations. On the lot and on the neighborhood as opposed to whether the site's particularly suited. So in this case, the variance uh is for floor area ratio. Uh and we are including with that the basement area, uh that floor area ratio is calculated against the significantly larger lot area. Than we have to deal with, uh which is why I thought it was a good exercise to balance that with some of the smaller lot. Uh zones within the community to see how this house would fit in. And I think the the conclusion was correct, it's kind of right in the middle of the R five, R seven five in terms of what the expectations is. It's certainly not a is significantly imposing house for the lot. It's consistent with the setbacks in the neighborhood in terms of the front setbacks, we are deviating from that, and it is. By your R twenty standards, significant deviation, but when you look at it in context of the neighbors. We're very much in line with what the neighborhood setbacks are. Um the homes to either side of us have ample room to the sides. Uh they have their own rear yards for enjoyment, the front yard setbacks are fairly consistent. So when we look at the impact of the deviation, because we're going straight up, because we're tucking that into the back, the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on the community. Is really diminished through the design considerations that that Anthony put forth. So when we look at this, I think uh we certainly have tempered the deviation. And we look to the negative problems, uh are we consistent with your master plan, and are we doing anything to significantly impair your zoning ordinance or or uh. Mess or uh any community impacts, and I don't believe we are, uh the master plan seeks to maintain the standards of the community. To maintain the character of the neighborhood, we do that. Uh in terms of impact, we're not increasing the intensity of the land use, it'll continue to be a single-family home, although the three bedrooms instead of two. Uh we're not creating any additional traffic, we're not creating any additional noise. Uh we indicated that if need be, we can't put a drywall to the rear, there is ample space to do that, if uh if any issues happen. But we are reducing the overall impervious, so we think that'll continue to operate at the very least the way it is today. Um so in terms of the D variance relief, I think we're very much on point uh and we're meeting the criteria under the Coventry Standard.
Can we, can we explore that for any? So, Mr. President, I I I'm I'm a little troubled by the lot coverage. Um and if you had a whole bunch of permits and everything was permitted, I think I'd be less troubled by it, because I don't think it's. Uh something to raise, but I'm I'm wondering, I'm hearing the drywall is possible, which you've endorsed said the same. Uh if the the Ford's offered to grant the application to grant the variances, is there an opportunity to get all the leaders into a drywall? And actually improve this situation, uh recognizing that we are abutting the river and that's um a a big concern.
Sure. And and I think the soils would be conducive per se.
Only because you still wrote, Mr. Ryan, is that something you would be amenable to uh?
Yes. Yes, putting dry, putting in dry wells if necessary, uh i- in in order to uh pick up the running shores, the the capture the rubble, no sure, no problem.
And then, and you agreed about a plan showing the location and then um. Details on what your your constructing model is, so we'll test it, make sure that it actually works.
Yeah.
Any additional question on the D? So that brings us to the the bulk variances, uh and as this board is. More than well aware of both variances can be adjudicated under one of two standards, C one, the hardship standard in this existing condition. That kind of cannot be modi- modified or any burdens modified, and then flexible C two with a balance test. Uh the C one criteria is appropriate by which to review thing that we have no control over things like lot area, uh lot frontage, lot width, lot depth. Front setback, uh number of stories. Uh and again, we would like to maintain the location of vehicles, those are existing conditions. And it's how that lot is parked uh appropriate to meet the recent standard. Um those are conditions that were pleasing, that are existing conditions. Um that we think would create greater challenges if we had to alter, and I'm specifically speaking with this respect to the parking uh than otherwise. Uh with respect to the other uh. Variances that we went through, I would argue the C two criteria, the balance test. And under the, under the balance test, we'd have to indicate that the each of those uh relates to a specific piece of property, and it does, it's. And that it advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, and I believe at the two on the record, that the benefits of the deviation would outweigh any detriment. So so the benefits uh of those deviations then includes the air conditioning components and the the additions to the back and. Intrusions into the additional uh both the height uh to the back on the side yards. Um tho- those all are there to maintain the integrity of the house and the neighborhood. And to still make it something that's livable in the future. The benefits of all those deviations cumulatively uh will will preserve essentially the footprint of the house. Uh we're improving the impervious, which I think is is an overall benefit to this area, given that lots are undersized to begin with. Uh but when we look at it in context, that that will be preserved and frankly, once the construction's done. There'll be very, uh I believe there'll be very little uh indication to the casual passerby that anything has changed to the lot. Or to the back, and I think that's a substantial benefit uh of this application as opposed to creating issues with building new, having to come in for. Substantial relief for a new structure because of all the variances that would be required. And to not only noise but construction debris and the intent. Prolonged uh disturbances that new construction would create, so I do believe that there's a a positive to that. With respect to the negative criteria, we have to talk about whether there's a substantial detriment to the public good. And again, in this case, we're maintaining this as a single-family house, will be owner occupied by Mr. Ryan, who's leading uses as a retirement home. Uh he is seeking to make it livable, that master bedroom suite in the back, and it's appropriately located, not only in terms of being able to. Hide that essentially or to blend that uh addition away from the street. But also to take advantage of the unique location and the views of the river. So, you know, essentially, it it has substantial uh benefits to it. Uh but also without creating any kind of detriment, because it is minimizing any impact upon the neighborhood. Um and again, I talked about the noise, runoff, uh trash, traffic. None of that would be uh expanded or intensified by this, it will continue to operate as a single-family home. Uh and then finally, if the variance will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Again, we are, we are undersized and we are trying to work within the uh the intent of the ordinance and not only looking at the R twenty. For looking at the other residential districts in terms of what expectations would be, we do believe we maintain uh the integrity. Of scaling this appropriately for the size of the lot, even though it is undersized. Uh and more importantly, scaling it appropriately uh in terms of neighborhood context. I do believe we advance those purposes within your master plan and within your zone plan. So when you look at this on balance, I do believe the uh the bulk variances that we uh put into the record can be granted. Uh without substantial detriment to either any of the neighbors, to the community, or to your master plan.
Well, got it. Questions for Mr. Kennedy?
From Looklight? Thank you, what else you have, Mr. President?
Chair, that's what, that's all I have for this evening, the eyewitnesses.
Uh any board members have any questions of um the applicant or 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 professional before we open to the public? Okay, gosh, everybody's here for a reason, I don't know if you're here for this, uh anybody that has any comments or questions regarding the Ryan application? Now the time. All here for something else, okay. Let the record reflect, uh we have no public comments, can I be in closing, Mr. President?
Mr. Chair, in closing, very brief, um. Would heard the testimony from 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 Mr. Condor and Mr. January, January, I think the board will. Agree, it's been a thought, it's a thoughtful process, it's it's a lot that's uh faced many challenges. Based on its existing condition, its existing size. Um I think um kudos to 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 the Ryans for going the renovation route. As opposed to um uh if I raised and rebuilt, probably will end up uh being more expensive to do it this way. But but more importantly, like Mr. as Mr. Condors and Mr. January testified. Um uh makes it easier and better to keep the house, keeping the house more uh aligned. Both physically but also aesthetically and and architecturally to save other homes in the area. Um so that that street street state is maintained, that thoughtful process has has gone through a number of iterations. And I think what has been presented to the board is something that, you know, I think. Uh the Ryans and Mr. Condors are proud of, and hopefully the board is too.
Thank you. Scott.
Not sure that the applicants and professionals were aware that they locked themselves into the more restrictive version of the repairian. Buffer ordinance when we took jurisdiction. Yeah, but um I mean, since obviously the intent of the governing body is to. Fix that, you know, I don't have much to say about that, so. Not much to say about that, um beyond that, um. There were comments about the. The parking situation and the impervious surface. And and I think believe those were. Pre-existing, uh deformities, I'm not sure that they predate the. Ordinance, um I don't think that the shared driveway would be there if those. Two brick parking pads had been there, I'm I'm sure that those date back past two thousand eight. Um but I don't believe that they date back to nineteen sixty or two, I never was, um. I I don't know why these small lots by the river. And to accumulate so much impervious surface and lot coverage. If you look at this property and the one next to it, they. They're sort of paved from the back with. Um parking and decks and patios and cool things. I'm very happy to hear that they're willing to put in a um. A drywall in the appropriate place to recapture as much of the. Uh stormwater as possible, because I feel like the. The front and side parking situation there contributes a lot to to runoff that just. So I really appreciate that. Um I I realize it's an undersized lot, it's it's just because it's really. Poorly miszoned by the municipality, and that's just a function of the fact that it's on the river. Um and that they stretch that so long. I I think there were comparisons to the houses on either side, which from the tax records appeared to only be about. Two thousand square feet and twenty-four to twenty-five hundred square feet. Um.
Yeah, that's probably a function of the basement things.
Uh it may be, yeah.
Uh we're, that's that's a big difference.
But um. They said it's 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 masked away from where it's going to be seen by the pub- public primarily. Um the public does see the back of these as well, um you know, when they're using the river and. You know, they'll still see some of that, but it's uh. It's already, they're gonna see the back of the front two-story section already. So it's just moving back towards the river a little bit, and and on that scale, it doesn't make a difference. Um.
So this is, um this involves a D, just so everybody remembered, we've got seven votes and we need five affirmatives in order for this application to proceed. Um or in order for this application to be prepared. Uh who else?
Oh, okay, um I mean, obviously, we know the lots in the zone, if we look at the seven and a half, and I originally looked at a five, but. With the modest measurement of the lot, I think we can pretty much call this more like a seven and a half, and I think the numbers work well. Aside from, now we're still over the max for seven and a half at thirty-four eleven, uh but. That being said, the basement really does count a lot into this calculation, so you have to, you know, I I know it's there, but I I kind of tend to discount it. Um I appreciate that they use the more modest locked locked uh measurement, because we've run into that in the past. And I think the numbers just work a lot better on the seven and a half, the impact is all to the viewers, Al said, um I think there's sufficient space east and west. That the the neighbors are not going to be affected, I think it's a minimal effect affectation to eat both sides, east and west. And I think it's a good plan, maintaining the character of the house is an excellent idea. Um we always want to see renovation out of the tear. I like, I I think it's good, I think it's a nice plan, I think it's a good presentation as well, guys, congratulations on that. And um a- and the the bonus of of putting in the. Uh drywall kind of uh does us a big favor, we know that the state and the town is looking at stormwater management, fact that it is on the river. A small narrow lot, we really would appreciate it uh, the drywall building, and I'm supportive.
Um I would agree with Peter, nervous and challenging, um you know, challenging lot. And keeping it within the character of uh River Road, uh which is kind of important thoroughfare through town. Uh I drive up and down that road constantly, uh that is a very charming stretch of uh road in Fairhaven and to keep the character. Uh renovating as opposed to tear down and building new, I think is what we want. Uh I think the plan is uh. As good as it's gonna get for that lot, uh everything is towards the back. Um with the addition of the drywall, which I would put as a condition uh for this approval. Uh I also would like to, we mentioned removing some of the impervious uh coverage in the back corner. Um I would like that removed as well, because as you can see from that overview. Uh silting is a huge problem with that cove, and it just something gets worse year by year by year. Uh so anything we can do to alleviate that would be very helpful. Uh I would also suggest, um and I don't know what is planted along with bulkhead. But since that property is on a slope, there is a lot of water that just runs down that hill. If we did, if the if the owner, Mr. Ryan, if you could put some uh. Grasses and stuff along the bulkhead, I think it would alleviate some of the runoff that's gonna happen that way too. So anything that you can do uh would be appreciated, but those two things definitely are condition.
Uh I want to ask you about the removal of the impervious, because I think the the applicant had proposed to remove some of the impervious. And that's effectively what the proposal is, are you talking about removing something?
No, 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 that was it for that.
Something acknowledging and appreciating that it's being.
Okay, yeah, no, but I'd want that to be like, well, it's already in the record, so sorry.
The the photo on the back of the engineer's letter shows the condition of the landscaping along that wall there, it looks like it's pretty. Standard.
Yeah.
Native, not grasses, but native stuff.
The the more we can do, even if that, I'm I'm very familiar with that code, and it's the ten or twelve years that I've been down here. It has gotten remarkably worse, and when you go down the end of Brown's Lane, it's just, you know, it's glowing down, uh silk runoff every now.
Uh you're not proposing to add a condition, you're just simply making the statement that you think the grasses would be nice, right?
Exactly, suggestion.
Even even with the drywall, I wonder about bleaching of uh material or runoff into the uh into the river. And uh I I don't know how you answer that question, I think the overall presentation has been excellent. Uh I think that I can understand why there's so many houses there in close proximity, because everybody wants a piece of the river. And as they, as they should, I mean, it's a, it's a very attractive location, and it's a very, a very nice view looking at it. Uh I do think it's a difficult lot, uh I don't uh. I don't have a problem with uh the fact that most of the the bulk has been placed into the rear of the property. And uh I think everything considered, uh everything that's been done has been done very tastefully, and I'm fine with it. And uh, I think everything considered, everything that's been done has been done very tastefully, and I'm fine with it.
Nothing that hasn't already been said, I, I think the presentation was good, uh, appreciate the dry well, we've been working on that. I do think that the bulk is not so much to the back of the house as it appears, or I. Took a lot of time to kind of slowly drive it to the chagrin of people holding the word. There's really nowhere to park without getting clipped, so.
Twenty-five mile an hour now.
Yeah, that's probably. So, um, but I think it's outweighed by the fact that you're gonna keep the, you know, you're gonna keep the home, it is an incredibly charming stretch, when you come down, it, it's like very welcoming, right? You see the, you know, fair even sort of uh, light posts, and you come around the stretch, get a little vista of the water, so. It will be nice that that's uh, being kept and generally in support of it, conditioned on the dry well and the other things, but I do think. Once it's built, it is going to be bulkier than we all think, especially when you come around that curve, it's not, it's not the back of the house, you, you see the whole side. Of the home, and when you come down, from this way you won't see it, but you do as you're coming up towards ramps, and you see the whole side profile of the house, it's not like we just. You know, grab a, a piece of like that fort to go, right? Kind of what it feels like, I know this wasn't intentional, but kind of what it feels like is, hey, we have this little entrance. So let's use this as an excuse to go up, and then let's just square off the house and say, hey, well, it's not that bad, because, you know, we're not adding them. So, I think that's outweighed by the other stuff, generally supportive of it, and do think it'll be bulkier than you think. So.
Anything more?
Nothing really to add, as an already been said, I, I think Paul said it pretty well, the application's private, especially you're gonna get from the slot. And I appreciate the consideration, dry well course, and I would support the application.
So I, I would, I would comment that, um, this is the reason that you can't take numbers and just look at numbers, right? This is the reason for the board, this application is the reason that I took the time to be here tonight and participate. Um, the application is as good as it gets, Mister Ryan, I want to thank you for what you've designed. This is one of the reasons why all of this room wants to be in fair even. Um, I think that on balance, you're struggling with a whole bunch of things, and I think that you've done an excellent job putting it together in a way that's gonna bring you a new house. In a way that, um, that isn't going to substantially change the character in this area. But want to address the issue of the front, had the applicant had an entirely brass front goal. And requested a variance, um, for additional lot coverage in order to put parking there, given the street. Uh, I think you could make a compelling argument, and I think a lot of, of the other homes have either put it in on their own, or come before and argued. That as a matter of safety, to get those cars off the street and to find a place to tuck a car is super important. And it's not the only thing that's important, but I think it's, it's a significant factor. Um, I think that the dry well that we discussed, and I'm gonna make a, a motion. And I'm gonna include, uh, the requirement that there be a dry well that's suitable for all of the runoff. Of the as completed structure, I, I think that that does as much as the applicant could do to negate that, uh, tonight. I'm struggling a little bit with the basement, not because of the math. But because I, I'm struggling with the thirty-four hundred square feet going to the tax assessor. Um, it is not the intent, it was not the intent of changing the ordinances for Mister Ryan to pay for eight hundred square feet of storage habitable space. And there's one main reason that I feel comfortable that Mister Ryan isn't gonna be spending that basement. Because the garage is in the best spot to use that lower level, and so most people would have that lower level of windows, and you would look out and, and it would be great. And, um, my inclination is to identify that as a basement. And to identify the house, um, with regard to the approval as technically a thirty-four hundred, but acknowledging that that basement is a basement. Uh, I think we could put some language in there with regard to the testimony to make sure that it's conditioned. On the plans being exactly as they are, there was testimony that it's not heated or cooled, and it isn't finished. And for so long as that's the case, at least to the extent that this board has an impact on what the assessor does, I think that we should qualify that as a basement. The only other thing that I, that I have is that there is some substantial vegetation over there, I recognize that the, um, developed area is not directly gonna impact that vegetation. But what really tends to happen, even when that doesn't happen, is that the trucks are everywhere, we're destroying the roots and lose things a few years later, and so I would simply like to, um, add into the resolution. Um, the board's desire for the applicant to take extra care, uh, to make sure that everything is preserved, particularly the larger mature stuff. Um, and then, you know, hopefully it all works out. We've also heard the comment with regard to the vegetation at the bottom by the bulkhead, and I think that that was a good comment, although I don't think we're adding that as a condition. So short anybody telling me that they think I'm out of my mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
Just one other condition, that you will make sure that your numbers on your exhibits that we had, when you said there were some of those numbers wrong. You'll submit, you'll resubmit those exhibits to the accurate.
Okay, so, um, the, uh, motion would be to approve the application based on the accuracy of the record and the materials that were submitted, I do not have a real, that the, um. The, the, the three, uh, the three conditions, if you will, to identify inside of that is first of all the. Um, I know that Jordan wants to see a look, uh, take a look at the, at the specs. Uh, I think the focus is to make sure that it has the capacity to manage the drainage, uh, from the improvements, the entirety of the house. Um, so that we can improve that condition and make it better, um, and so that would be number one. Um, number two would be that there be, um, that there be special care or care or something, make sure that that vegetation is preserved. Um, I don't want to go crazy, I just, I just want it written down. Um, and the last thing is that, um, I want there to be a statement in the resolution. That while the ordinances technically define this is thirty-four, whatever it is, that the, I, I propose that the board recognize that we have a basement here. Based on the following facts, and then I'd like that to recite the existing layout, the testimony that it's not heated and cooled, it is not finished, it is not used at habitable spa, as habitable space. There is a garage that is a component, it's located right there at the side of the river, and as a result of all of that. That the board concludes that it is not typical living space, and that the board doesn't consider it to be anything more. Um, than a basement, and that it shouldn't be counted, and our number, the number without that in the resolution, and I think it's a process that the assessor. Uh, appreciates that as well, uh, that's my motion. We'll call on the ready.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Uh, Mister Ryan?
Yes.
Mister Forte?
Yes.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mister Pincella?
Yes.
Mister Chevalier?
I don't think you get to me, F seven.
No. Yeah, that's it.
How many you got? You ain't got many. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much, really, really big time. Congratulations, Ryan.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pass the lot, yeah, we're gonna throw, we're gonna take a five-minute recess while they get to.
Yes.
Mister Ryan?
Here.
Mister Forte?
Yes.
Mister Walker?
Sure.
Mister Pincella?
Here. 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 Doug, would like to confirm that you have your condition sheet?
Yes.
Anybody's gonna testify on this application? Everybody, stand up, like, you think you're gonna say something, you might say something, you wanna say something? Ask you to, so I swear or affirm the testimony you give for this part of the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth. And you can say instructions at seven point, you all sit down, relax now, and call it as you guess. Uh, before you start testifying. Just state your name to the record, spell your last name for the record, so that we have actually an idea of who's speaking, if we have to make a transfer to this record. You know, sit down now, use a new serial thing by the department exhibit. Follow the direction of your counsel once your call. Here's what I have for exhibits. Sir. Cover letter from the applicant's attorney, dated August twenty-four, two pages, A one. List of variances, two pages, dated September sixth, twenty twenty-three. We developed an application consisting of ten pages, A three. One copy, eight pictures of the property, not dated, but depicting various views, providing various signatures about the property, mark A four. Eighty-five, two hundred minutes from the tax assessor, dated July twentieth, twenty twenty-three. A six, meaning the top graph, boundary and top graphic survey by insight survey, July first, twenty twenty-three. A seven, copies of the used variance and minor site plan prepared by insight engineering, revised to, excuse me, November tenth, twenty-three. Land use and development regulations checklist consisting of eleven pages, inclusive of the list of variances and waivers, A eight. Architectural plans titled renovation to five fifty River Lock, River Road, Lock ten, Block thirty-three, Fairhaven, revised to November second, twenty twenty-three. Uh, again, another cover letter from the applicant's counsel, the applicant stated November seventeen, twenty twenty-three. Response letter, well, from insight, basically, we wanted to the engineer's comments, dated November fifteen, twenty twenty-three. And then we have the C N E review. Mark that Z B one, October tenth, twenty twenty-three, over the signature of Jordan Rizzo. Uh, and Z B two, that you're gonna see any review letter, uh, December fifth, twenty twenty-three. And with signature of Jordan Rizzo, I don't know if you have any additional exhibits today, or remark them as we go, counsel?
Sure can, thank you.
Mister, you're reminded, we are A eleven now.
A eleven, yep, that's right.
It will be A twelve.
Yes, sir, Mister Kovas, there were a few items in the fact list. That they're receiving waivers for, so.
Okay. Want to help us from, uh, want to help us from private?
Yeah, sure.
I think that is, is that all of this is on the list of waivers or variances, any markers in the exhibit, or they're using something different?
I'm referring to Z B two, which is, uh, the fifth. Uh, the first two are draft notices, that's the, uh, property owners and newspaper, which I did no exception to, because I'm sure at this point it's been reviewed and.
That category for jurisdiction, actually, do we use them?
Um, the next three are. Mom and County, Mom and County planning board application, real that's the D application, and Mom and County Health Department application. I'm sure the applicant will agree to draw final approvals, uh, should they be applicable for this project.
Uh, Jordan, I'm gonna stop you right there, uh, I believe Mister Ryan.
Well, swaying, should I, now I'm accusing myself. Very good, you did advise me, I'm sorry, I stepped on your, stepping down, okay.
Sorry, no problem, and then the next network. In my opinion, are not applicable to this application, uh, given the scope, it's a wetlands, uh, L O I, stormwater design. Profiles and roads and utilities and soil erosion.
Any questions about the proposed waiver? We got a real form of love? We okay? Anyone want any of the waivers separated now? No? All right, you have a quick roll call, there's, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, accept the proposed waivers, uh, as listed by Jordan.
I'll tell you. Yes.
Mister Rizwad?
Yes.
Mister Forte?
Yes.
Doctor Walker?
Yes.
Mister Pincella?
Yes.
Mister Leader?
Yes. Are you?
Thank you, Chairman, good evening, board members, Mark Akins on behalf of the applicant, M A B five fifty River Road LLC. Um, ladies and gentlemen, today's significance is not lost on any institution of history. Some eighty-two years ago, the United States was deliberately and, uh, without notice attacked. And I bring this point up not to share a history lesson, but to say. That, uh, in reviewing a little bit of history today myself. I noticed that the, um, campaign that led to the attack on the Hawaiian Islands and the naval base at Pearl Harbor. Actually originated many years before, when the Japanese, uh, Imperial Army decided that their northern strategy in China. Was not succeeding, and so they then changed tactics. And moved towards a southern strategy to secure the, uh, oil fields and the other natural resources in this, in the Southwest Pacific. Uh, that change obviously changed world history. And on a smaller level, uh, we're here today because in December of nineteen sixty-eight. This zoning board of adjustment first approved this site as a principal bank. So, um, that was a few years back as well, and, uh. Just that's a little bit of history, so the ripples from nineteen sixty-eight are ripples that continue today in twenty twenty-three, and that will bring this all together this evening. Hot on, Mr. Ryan, and thank you very much, I do appreciate that, Chairman. Thank you for the indulgence.
Exactly the question I had, is that when this became a bank, in, in a residence, it's not, that caused the.
Uh, again, we, we date to the, uh, board's resolution of December seventeen, nineteen sixty-eight, construction circa nineteen seventy-one.
Where's, where's the resolution, I haven't seen it yet.
Uh, I'll, I'll, would you, Chairman, do you like to see it?
I sure would.
Yeah. For the record, Todd was not on the board that day.
Take it away, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you very much, so a, as we know, this is, uh, a, a proposed, uh, uh. Redevelopment and an adaptive reuse of the former P N C Bank Building on River Road at five fifty River Road. Um, again, uh, the proposal is to, uh, use the first floor of the building. Uh, to permit, um, personal exercise studio, um, and, uh, the second floor to permit. A related personal service, uh, use, these uses require D variances. Because this is a resident, residentially zoned property, this is in the R five zone, believe it or not, here we are some fifty years later, still in the R five zone. Um, with me this evening will be, uh. Uh, several principals of the owner, and I, uh, had noted to, um, Mister Kovas, that, uh, originally, some months back, when we submitted the application. And we made the disclosure of the, uh, owners of the LLC, there was just one owner, Andrew Anderson. Today, he's brought on two partners, his sister-in-law Melissa Man Cuso, was here this evening, but will not be giving testimony. And Mike Duffy, who again is going to be the principal tenant, um, and who is also an equal member, and who will be giving testimony. So just to note that for our record. Um, as well, in addition, there are, not surprisingly, given, uh, the use, the former use of the property, there are a number of existing non-conforming conditions. Um, there, uh, there will be testimony from, uh, in addition to, uh, the principals. Uh, from, uh, James Anderson, licensed architect, and to my right, Jason Fichter. Professional engineer and licensed professional planner, and again, uh, Mister Duffy as well, Mister Anderson. So, uh, with that, I know they have been sworn, um, may I place Mister Fichter's credentials on the record, please?
We, we can stipulate, Jason, how many times have we done this?
A hundred and fifty thousand, yeah.
Anybody have an objection to accepting?
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, Mister Fichter, good evening, um, I'm wondering if you can give the board a little orientation as to where this property is located in relation to. The road and the R five zone, just to start us off.
Oh, sure, yeah, we're, um, we're on the, uh, south side of River Road. Um, on the western end of what I'll call the, or what your master plan refers to as the business district, Main Street kind of field. Um, it appears to be a portion of the B one zone that it's adjacent to. Um, right there on the corner of River Road and Space Street. Perfect, is there a, uh, handout that we can mark, or? So I have two exhibits, they're both up on the board, I also have handouts, if you guys would like, should we distribute? So, yeah, let's do that, please, okay, so we're gonna mark, um, what's identified as five fifty River Road Neighborhood Exhibit. Is that for site layout exhibit?
Site layout.
Site layout exhibit will be A twelve, probably. So, yeah.
Jordan, you agree?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you. You have an A, A twelve?
Date.
Date. Date is.
Oh, sorry.
December seventh, twenty twenty-three. I also have another exhibit labeled the Neighborhood Exhibit, also dated December seventh. Uh, it's the same exhibit, I believe, A thirteen, right, so, uh, it's the same exhibit as A twelve, just zoomed out. And we show an aerial of the neighborhood. With, uh, the two hundred foot radius around the subject property, and we also show the zone boundaries with the zone labels. Uh, and we also have conveniently the tax, uh, block and lots showing, just for reference. So that's A. Yeah, okay. Alright, so I'll walk you through uh the engineering site orientation portion of things, and then I'll I'll step aside for a few. This is block thirty-three lot ten, I mean, it's known as five fifty River Road. We all know it as the bank property, everybody seems to refer to it as. The lot itself is nineteen thousand two hundred fifty-two square feet. We're in the R five zone. Uh, the R five zone coincidentally requires lots to get you seven thousand square feet. We're directly adjacent to the G one zone to our east. And the uses in the neighborhood are mixed residential and commercial. Again, in commercial uses, they're generally in line. Along River Road and then the residential uses surround that. As was discussed, the bank was approved in around nineteen, actually in nineteen sixty-eight. Was constructed somewhere around sixty-nine or seventy, and I believe it started to operate around seventy or seventy-one. And it's, yeah, back then it was in exactly the same form that it's in today. So the applicant is seeking approval to repurpose the existing building as what they like to refer to as a wellness center. And as far as the applicant is concerned, uh from their perspective, when they first got into this project, there are no site improvements that were required. But when the professionals got involved, we took a look, considered the uses uh and your ordinance, we recognized that some site improvements. Uh, would be necessary or appropriate in response to your ordinance and just for general use of the property. The building itself only requires minor res- um renovations, and that's in order to accommodate the proposed uses. The main reason that we're here tonight is for use variance relief to keep to continue as non-residential use on this property. And we're also requesting some minor uh incidental variances. So the existing bank building is is known well to everyone. It faces River Road. Uh, there are two drive-through windows, one on the east and one on the west side of the building. The parking lot for the property is on the east side, which is on the corner of River Road and Smith Street. The circulation pattern is one-way ingress from Smith Street near the intersection of River Road. That's the east end of the parking lot, and then there's two one-way ingress driveways along River Road, one for each of the drive-through windows. One of those uh exit driveways provides egress uh to River Road for both the uh one of the. As well as the park. It's like a double wide driveway and Mister Rizzo calls it two, however you look at it, it's a big wide drive. Terms of utilities, we anticipate that all the existing uh utility connections will continue to serve the building. We don't see a need for connecting to new utilities. Obviously, during construction, the utility company or the professionals at the time may say otherwise, but. From what we can tell right now, there's going to be no need for additional utility connections. For stormwater, we're only proposing about two hundred and forty-three square feet of soil disturbance for the project, which in terms of stormwater is virtually nothing. We also happen to be reducing lot coverage, which further supports uh an improvement on stormwater management for the property. By regulation, there's there's no stormwater management facilities that are necessary. And technically, by the numbers, the proposed runoff from the property will be less than the existing because of the reduction in purbi services. We are proposing to maintain the same circulation pattern that was in place for the bank. Again, vehicle will enter from Smith Street and no exit to River Road. We're using the former drive-throughs for parking, both of them. Um, and they both have immediate exits to River Road, which is convenient. Your ordinance permits up to two driveways per street frontage, and visually, again, that's what we have. Uh, but the driveway in the middle of our River Road frontage is why uh in Mister Rizzo's letter, he called it out as two driveways. And if that you interpretation, then we would require a designed waiver for that, since that would then make three driveways on River Road. But in reality, we're only proposing to maintain what the bank has been using for about fifty years.
Mister Fisher, the. When the bank had it, I'm pretty sure they used that second, the driveway to the. West as employee parking. Will that be maintained as employee parking, or is that going to be used for clients?
Yeah, I'm gonna walk you through that, but spoiler alert, yes, that's intended as an employee parking space. You're talking about the place where we show one spot.
Uh.
I'll walk.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, that's employee parking, you got it. Um, also, the proposed uses are gonna generate less traffic than the bank did, and when I walk you through a little bit about the operations, you'll. You'll understand what I mean about that. So in terms of traffic, we don't anticipate any issues. So one of the most significant benefits of this application is improvements in the parking situation. So the bank required forty-three parking spaces or requires uh by your ordinance today, requiring forty-three. Um, the proposed use requires only nineteen, so their parking demand is reduced by twenty-four spaces. And to add to this benefit, we're also able to increase the number of parking spaces from the eight that are there today to sixteen that we show on the proposed plan. So we calculated the required number of parking spaces from your ordinance, which is one space per two hundred square feet of training area. Um, and we also have a note on there about professional office, we're not proposing professional office. We would just like to keep the door open for professional office in case there's tenant issues. It's it's permitted in the B one, I'll get into that more. But in terms of parking, the parking demand for professional office is less than these training or fitness studios.
So I I I wanna understand the proposed use. Um, I understand that the lower level is proposed to be renovated for this uh wellness studio, as I recall it. And um how is the second floor proposed to be used for the same tenant or for a different tenant?
You know, different tenant, which Mister Anderson will testify to, Chairman.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the parking requirements, I I find it curious that the bank requirements are over forty. Uh, although I did see in the resolution that there was uh testimony uh during the original approval, there would be off-site parking identified to accommodate the overage. Um, what is the origin of, did you say eighteen is what you require based on your?
So nineteen, and I I'm gonna dig into that further for you, but nineteen is the number.
Okay.
Sixteen proposed.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
When you say wellness, you mean physical therapy?
We're going to, we're gonna have specific testimony by Mister Duffy with regard to his use and these proposed tenant in the second floor doctor with regard to Mister Anderson's testimony. We'll get, we'll get into that very specifically. This is a general overview of the site issues. Then I'm going to present the architect so that he can review the architecturals with you, and then I'm going to present Mister Duffy, then I'm going to present Mister Anderson. With regards to the specific uses, if that is of assistance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Fisher, the nineteenth spaces is just for the for the fitness though, right?
It's the whole building.
Oh, that's the whole building, the upstairs included.
Okay.
Yeah, I make one comment um about the existing parking. Uh, banks require the same as the proposed use. It's one per two hundred, but it also says that you need room for twelve automobiles per driving window. And or land for queuing purposes. So I think the the forty. Was forty three, forty-three, I think that speaks more to uh queuing. Where you wouldn't have queuing on the proposed application.
That's correct, and that's the benefit of this application is to reduce the demand to store vehicles on the property. Exactly.
Sure.
Yep. And site trips.
Yep.
Absolutely. Alright, so um as far as our parking calculation goes, I just want to clarify, we we come up with the number nineteen based on square footage of the building. And that includes what is actually an unusable portion of the second floor. There is a portion up there, you'll hear from Mister Anderson, there's a portion up there that's that's cluttered with dump work and utilities and all that kind of stuff. The second floor architectural plans actually divides that off because it can't be used. Um, it's about four hundred and fifty square feet, which if we deduct deduct that from the parking requirement. Your ordinance would then calculate out to needing sixteen, which is what we have. But just to be clear, we're calling it nineteen, not sixteen. We're counting at four fifty in our parking calculation. I'm just giving you context that it includes an area we cannot use.
So that's a conservative determination on your part, Mister Fisher.
That's correct. Um, now, in reality, the applicant doesn't even need nineteen spaces, and the reason for this is that these tenants, and I'm gonna give you an overview, you'll hear more detail. They operate by appointments in small groups. This is not a a typical gym where people come, go, say please, and sometimes they come in slugs, leaving slugs. This is really training by appointment or scheduled times as individuals or small groups with a with a cap. Uh, so the sixteen parking spaces that we're proposing are gonna be more than adequate for what these tenants are looking to do. For the, excuse me. Four of the parking spaces we provide are parallel parking spaces, and your ordinance does not address parallel parking spaces. So we called upon our experience uh and used parallel parking spaces, seven feet wide by twenty-two feet long, which is not uncommon. Um, and I wanna. Pause there for a second because Mister Rizzo and I had a conversation earlier today. Um, and during, don't let me speak for you, but I'll give an overview and cut me, I need to, but. Um, he would prefer to see the parallel spaces eight feet wide. Um, we're okay with that with one exception, the the parallel parking space that's closest to Smith Street. If we were to make it eight feet wide, we would not have the adequate drive aisle width. For the parking spaces that are head-on to River Road. So. Uh, there are two things that we could do there in that space. Uh, one is we can actually shorten it from twenty-two feet to eighteen feet. Because it's actually not a parallel parking space, even though that's what it'll look like, you can pull straight in, there's no parking behind it. So an eighteen-foot depth would be good. I wasn't able to check yet. If we make that space eighteen feet, uh eighteen feet deep and eight feet wide, if we still have the eighteen feet. Uh, drive aisle width, but if we don't, that one space could potentially be left at seven feet wide. Um, eighteen feet deep, the other spaces could be made eight feet wide, uh twenty-two feet long as shown. In any case, obviously, what we're trying to do is provide parking within the uh existing development that's on the property. Got it?
You hit it. Um, okay. Yeah, so I guess that's really. Discussion for the board, if if everybody understands. Um, there's four parallel parking spaces um on this southbound property. The easternmost parallel space. You wouldn't need the full twenty-two length, twenty-two feet length to drive past it and and reverse back into it. You can actually just. Enter it straight on. So I I wouldn't take exception to that being shrunk to that down to eighteen feet. So that way, when we have the. The angled spaces, which are skewed, you actually get more drive aisle width by shrinking it, shrinking the length down.
But what we're really talking about is how far the stripes go, right?
Correct.
And so at the end of the day, what's really gonna be determinative, how much room there is to move around, is how close people park to the curb, not necessarily where that stripe is.
Well, that's always the case with parallel parking, that's true.
Okay, okay. Alright, so um I also want to clarify the parking space uh behind the bank. Not the one we talked about earlier, the the one that's actually behind the bank, it has the label number one with the circle around it, if you're looking at the plan. Our intention with that space is simply to provide a standard nine-by-eighteen parking space. We pushed it forward, which is planned left or west. Uh, in order to leave enough room for the vehicle accessing the first parallel parking space. That's how we determine the placement of that nine-by-eighteen parking space.
I have a question on going back to your parallel spaces.
Sure.
How much? Is there, is there, there's a fence there now, isn't there?
There is.
Is that the bank property fence or the residence fence that aboves it?
Yeah, so it's on the bank's property. I didn't see the the neighbor side of it, I didn't want to go over there.
But it's curious when you park, because obviously you're coming in. And your car door is gonna be on the fence side. And how much room is there between that fence and?
It's very close. I have a photo of it, if you want to reference uh.
It's pretty tight to the curb, isn't it?
Case twelve and. And the fifth letter, ZB two.
So that fence is referenced in the resolution.
It is.
Um, and so it would appear that that fence was probably constructed in accordance with, since it's been replaced in accordance with the original install.
Yes.
But the underlying question ties back to whether or not if we marked it at eight or marked it at seven or four. Whether or not it really mattered. At the end of the day, people are gonna pull as close to the curb as they can, but they they're gonna have to leave room to get out. What's the reality of that situation given the location of the fence?
Though I think there's two parts to it. Um, I think Peter brings up a good point is the fence is right behind the curb line. So you don't have much room for your door there, but the way I was looking at it is for the seven-foot wide parking space. A larger-sized truck might procure out beyond that if you were to park right up. My other car that's.
Even if you weren't.
Right. And the reality is that everybody's not going to pull on this close to the curb as. You might want a design for it.
No, no.
Um, so even though we would have the parking space stripes going seven feet wide, in reality, vehicles would probably extend out beyond that.
So. So let's go to the next level, right? So what's the impact of that? Is there, is there anything about the way the balance of the site is laid out? That is, that would change. If we accepted that it's more likely to be nine feet.
So as you go from left. I'm sorry, right to left, which is east to west, the drive aisle expands, it gets wider. Um, so by striping it wider as you go further left. It doesn't have much of an issue because you have plenty of drive aisle width.
Okay.
Um, the issue that Mister Fisher brings up is his pinch point is where the eighteen is labeled um. And to have a compliant drive aisle width, he has to meet in that eighteen. Um, so the proposed solution, um would be to widen it is to shrink that space. So as you move it, move it to the left. He may get more. Drive aisle width by doing that.
Was it contemplated to remove some of the uh incurious sidewalk? I'm sure it was, um, in front of the parking spaces. Um, to create greater gap so those uh those cars could pull and pull four feet further in. Well, the the desire was to actually keep the that sidewalk so that when you park, you have a route to the building, rather than walking through the parking lot to the sidewalk. That's what that's for. So.
Okay, I I agree. I think. This isn't a traditional parking lot where you have ninety-degree spaces on each side. There's the angled spaces, the parallel spaces, so given the drivers a. Like a clear route to get out and walk, which not walk, I think that's a safer ambition.
Side needs to work. Um. I'll be interested to observe whether or not people wind up using that sidewalk in the end. And whether or not a better use of it would be, but you contemplated it, we talked about it a little bit, let's get going.
Okay. Uh, there was a comment in uh Mister Rizzo's review letter about uh drive aisle width, and and I did want to clarify that, we were just talking. Um, that same nine-by-eighteen space with the number one label in it, behind that space, you see a dimension of ten-point-nine feet. That's not really intended to be a drive-up. That is the parking space. So the idea is you would pull into that single nine-by-eighteen parking space. The ten-point-nine shows that you have nine feet to make that move. Um, and you also have the ability to back out and exit, which is the intention of that space. And that first parallel space has plenty of room to operate to get in and out. Um, we also show a parking space near the western drive-through, it also has a number one label in it, which is really just accounting. We're not labeling the parking spaces, we're showing you how many are there. That space is intended as an employee space, and it's labeled that way. That space is gonna see very little turnover. Uh, very little activity. And uh there was a comment, uh Mister Rizzo and I talked about earlier, we could put signage up on that driveway to make it clear that driving through there is for staff only. Again, working within the confines of the existing development, you thought there would be a benefit to provide parking within the pavement that exists today rather than this third.
If that's, if that's a parking spot uh on the western side of the building, doesn't that person have to back out onto River Road?
Oh, no. So I'm sorry. So the the entrance, so the two driveways on River Road, they have, they can show on the uh aerial. So the two driveways on River Road. They told us today have do not enter signs on both sides of the driveway, so that's the core do not enter sign, two here and two here. We would continue that. In order to get to this parking space here, you would enter from Smith Drive through and park. And you would then have a clear exit right out to River Road.
Isn't there an additional parking spot behind the building?
That's about the best. So the the employee space is the one that's on the western end.
Yeah.
Um, there's gonna be, so the it's presumed that the employee is gonna get there first. Right? By the way, there's sixteen spaces on here. As you hear more testimony about the use and how this thing operates. I think what you're gonna find is sixteen spaces aren't gonna be used, so it might not even be an issue, right? Um, but no, the idea is that a staff would pull in there, they would not need to pull in, pull out, they're in the place for their class, they get there first, they leave last. That's the idea. So we don't anticipate there to be a conflict.
The the uh the handicap space you have in the existing drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
Are you leaving the structure there, the drive-through structure, or is that, okay?
Yep.
That is kinda nice, right?
So the, uh, the employee-only space on the west side, that's not going to be stripes, right?
Oh, it wasn't intended to be, but we could.
Okay, um, I guess I'll leave that to the board, but my concern with that is. How would the employee know? How would the employee know how far to pull forward? Are they gonna pull all the way to the driveway, or are they gonna?
So, yes.
Stay back, and then if they stay back too far, does that leave the ability for someone to pull in River Road? Correctly, and maybe get stuck there.
Well, there, there are the do not enter signs on either side of that driveway. You're also gonna hear the architect talk about the fact that there, it's a covered drive-through. You have the, the building to your right, and then you have a small, for what used to be the, the, uh, teller window, I guess we call it, on the left. Um, you can hear the architect talk about repurposing that area, so a car, a car, a car would not park in front of that space. It would prevent somebody from getting in there, so, but we could sign it, if, if that made it better, you know. Park here, or some strange.
Yeah, what's the, what's the site triangle if you're employee, you're coming out here, you're gonna make a left, what does that look like on that corner there?
You know, we didn't, we didn't analyze it, but I do believe it's pretty open and it's a straight stretch of road with, with no dramatic elevation change. So I, I think the, uh, the sites are there, and that was probably not by mistake.
The bank used it in the same fashion, right, as employee parking for the bank, so.
Yep.
So I just wanna take an opportunity and, and, and a brief, uh, point out that it's nine-thirty. Um, I, I would like to go not later than ten-thirty. Um, and so I just want, Mr. Higgins, for you to think about how you wanna manage your time. Um, board does have a planner here tonight as well, um, and planner has not submitted anything to write it. Um, but I'd like to hear, um, from our planner, um, in terms of some testimony or a little bit of our thought. I'm not saying that needs to happen tonight, um, and, you know, maybe, maybe everyone's got only five minutes worth of stuff to talk about. But I just wanted to identify that for you so we don't get attention.
Thank you.
Yep, I mean, since we're talking about the parking, the circulation, all that. Any consideration made to. Closing. The. Double-wide. Um, entrance on to River Road that. You know, in the interest of maybe pedestrian safety and expanding your parking. Across the front of the property there, or, and or reversing the circulation. So that the parallel parking spots would work against the back fence. And.
Entering from River Road.
Entering from River Road on the west side of the bank. Circulating around the back, well, the, the building circulating around the back. Providing a left-handed exit from your car on the parallel parking against the back fence. And if you close that double-wide going back on to River Road. Increasing pedestrian safety across that sidewalk. And having people exit on to the slower speed. Smith Street there, in addition, when you reverse the circulation. Cars that come off of River Road on the Smith Street are not gonna get hung up there. If there's a car stopped looking for a parking space in the entrance to the parking lot, they're gonna be able to. That they're not going to be able to go in there. So, uh, these are just my thoughts on the circulation issue on the property there. Uh, were, were any of those things considered? Not really, you're just gonna go with what's there.
Well, largely, yeah, again, the, the project started out, yeah, I'm kind of saying, this is turnkey, you know, how do I get in there? And, you know, we talked about some things that need to be done.
You know, if, if it's not broke, then fix it, but I, this is an opportunity.
Yeah, I, so, absolutely, so recall, ladies and gentlemen, that of course this is County Route Ten, and the county has exclusive jurisdiction over the curbs cuts and the traffic. The county's master plan provides that, and its development regulations provide that ingress and egress primarily from secondary streets is preferred.
Which is reversed.
I'm just telling you what the county policy is, right? Right, so, so, so in this instance, to the extent that there's only egress on to River Road. I'm going to guess that the county engineer's office would not encourage that to be reversed. But certainly we have an application into the county planning board. Well, we could certainly raise the issue with them, but I'm anticipating, you know, knowing based on some experience. That, uh, that's not the county development policy.
I just want, I just want to clarify, so you, you, you're proposing, you're theorizing as to accessing the site. Um, with an innend from River Road at the westerlymost entrance.
I'm just asking if, if it's been considered, he's looking at this, yeah.
I just wanna make sure, and then you were supposed to float off the two, uh, double-wide exit on River Road off the deck, right?
Yeah.
That, so my initial reaction was, wow, that's interesting. But what I remember about this site is that when you pull in there, you're actually going through the building.
Yeah.
It's a roofed area and it's actually really narrow. Um, and then you have to navigate what is a really narrow driveway to get all the way around the back. I think throwing all the cars in that direction would create different problem. I do think it would provide a, a whole different set of opportunities with how you laid out the parking lot, but I think it becomes really complicated as, as you go next level.
And I think that's the alternative, with everything circulation and keeping the two. Curve cuts, but certainly any consideration of narrowing the double-wide curb cut there.
Well, so.
If it were, if it were circulating the other direction.
So two things, I, I agree with what you said, um. My concern about passing through the building in narrow drive, I same concerns, but also, again, you didn't hear from the architect about repurposing that, that teller window. So now you have the cars going through where people are gonna be walking in and out of the office, so that, that's a conflict that would make me uncomfortable. Um, including what we can to narrow down the double driveway, that, there might be something that we can do there to narrow it down. If, if we maintain the exit drive from the parking lot and we maintain the ADA space where it is. But tighten up that double wide, that's something we might be able to make a real difference with.
Yeah, I'm just asking if, if, if these ideas had been considered or not in, in the planning.
Yeah, they, they were, and the objective was to, to keep as little usage of that driveway as possible, hence the employee parking.
Obviously, a bank with two drive-through windows, having. You know, one and a half or, or, I mean, you know, two or two and a half. Curb cuts along River Road makes sense to get all of that traffic out of there. For, uh, an alternate use, it's much less intense. I don't know, but there's not some trade-off we could get for people that are. You know. Grappling. Along there to, to even, give a little more predictability by not having that curb cut being so wide, but.
I don't see the benefit to it, though, if you have the, if you have the, the ADA space there. Considering that there might be a car in it. Where are you gonna, where are you gonna make it now, or from the, in front of the ADA space?
You could angle, i- if you ran a line parallel to the, uh, handicap space, and you, you could, you could, you could reduce the distance. Of the curb cut overall, I, I think that it is, it is far easier to discuss in this room right now than it is to address this issue. Um, at Monmouth County, um, we have an application that was, um, before Monmouth County on the, on the road. With regard to the Shonoco site, they went back and forth with the county overall, we get all sorts of great ideas, county's view of stuff can be very different. Yeah, anyway, I thought, but.
So yeah, primarily I was just asking, any considerations, so go ahead.
And, and, but, but let me say this as well, Mr. Shabadi, chairman, board members, that I think. To the extent that we're not able to conclude by ten-thirty this evening, which I, I think seems very likely at this point. Um, we should have comments from the county, um, you know, by, by then, so. Uh, we could get some clear indication from the county, again, they, as we all know, they have the exclusive jurisdiction over that. So we're going to have to abide by what they say, but I have no issue asking Mr. Fisher to review that with his peers. In the county engineering and county planning departments.
Great, one more thing to consider with regard to bringing all the traffic in through the westernmost driveway. Is that there's a residences to the rear, so, um, there, there's buffers that you'll hear about, I'm sure. Um, bringing every vehicle that enters the site along that property line, um, might be more of a nuisance to the neighbors. And I'm sure that that was probably one of the considerations to why it's employee.
You know, net-net, our thought was that the proposed uses, and again, you'll hear the specific demands shortly, hopefully shortly. Um, you know, would be a reduction to the neighbors that are most, or that have been most directly affected for the last fifty years of bank operations. Without involving anybody else, right? Or, or impacting anybody else.
Not insignificantly, tying in planning considerations into engineering design, we put this together. We have a site that's been functioning for fifty or so years, and somebody said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, that was kind of the philosophy when we put it together, so we followed it. I, I'm gonna pivot real quick to the issue of drainage, and I don't mean to open the entire, the whole response of that. But I wanna ask you whether or not you've evaluated, um, the grade on-site today. Um, the, the resolution, as I read it, um. Uh, commented that as this site was going to be developed, everything was gonna drain to River Road. Um, has there been any confirmation that that's in fact where everything drains and that we're not pitching back?
Well, we're, we're not changing anything, and there is a curve on the backside of the site, which would prevent the water from going that way. So the intention was to leave it.
Especially given the, uh, problems that we've been having with colonial court there, which is currently going.
They were having those problems in nineteen sixty-eight, I just read.
They were having it ever since, every bank drains, uh, back up. That's mystery, that colonial court, that, you know, the whole neighborhood is a bowl in there, colonial court, that's a, that's a pickle.
Yep. Alright, shall I keep going? Alright, refuse, um, no. Uh, we're proposing a, a new refuse area in a more discreet location, it's close to where the bank had it. Uh, we have a small concrete pad in the rear of the building, it's, it's less visible than where it is today, which is closer to the eastern drive-through. Refuge is gonna be stored in cans, uh, this, the, the, uh, the wellness tenants, if you will. Um, they're not big garbage producers, it's not gonna be a lot, so we have room for cans back there. Um, we had a discussion about whether this will be public or private pickup, and we didn't come to conclusion on that. But I assure you, someone will come pick it up and there will not be refuse backing up on this property, so refuse will be handled. Terms of lighting. This was a big discussion as we looked at the property and had to bring it up to speed for the proposed uses, there are no lights on the site today. So we're proposing three, and our objective with these three lights was to make the parking lot safer. We had one pole light, uh, by the driveway at Smith Street, which is the standard design convention, light up the intersections, that's where vehicular conflicts occur, so we did that. We have a second pole light at the midpoint of the parking lot, which covers most of the parking lot. And then we have a building-mounted light near the driveway to River Road, it's, it, the light faces, um, east, if you will, faces toward Smith Street. And that lights up the driveway at River Road.
And you, I, 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 I can't see it on the plan, go on and look out.
Yeah, please, and you, please explain what kind of fixtures you'll be introducing, English direction the light would be headed.
So there, the, the lights are LEDs, they're at varying heights, I think between fourteen and eighteen, according with the organs. Um, they shoot down.
You have a fine detail for that in the site plans, Mr. Fisher?
There is a light detail in, in the plan, so.
So they're dark sky variety, or it's?
They, they go down, yes. So, one light is at the, uh, the driveway.
You can look here, sir.
Alright, that's the light. So we have a light pole of the driveway from Smith Street, so like. We have a pole about in the middle of the parking lot here. And then we have a, a light mounted on the, uh, I guess I'll call it the eastern drive-through, well, the light faces this direction. Kind of goes River Road in a triangular, and the intention is to light up that guy. So what we've done, and it's shown on our lighting plan, is we lift the driveway here, we lift the driveway here, we lift the parking lot in the middle. And that's it.
And little backyards, of those houses.
We're not gonna, we, we, we can't give, uh, other testimonials, have an opportunity to ask Mr. Fisher questions at.
So there are utility poles, public utility poles, one is directly out from the front of the building under the grid. And one is about the midpoint of the parking lot on River Road, they both have overhead, if I'm not mistaken. Northern, eastern, utility pole by the parking lot, that overhead actually comes back for the property. And then the overhead, uh, in front of the building goes out to the street. The, the one that's by, uh, closer to Smith Street, it just adds light, which is nice. The one that's, uh, by the building actually lights up the front of the building, so that's the pedestrians' difference.
The lighting, the landscape lighting detail, sheet six-zero-eight, I see the lighting pole there on the back.
Yeah, so that, so you have the, it's the same light, it's, it's the mountain, that's the difference.
I see.
Yep. So, and then on the lighting plan.
So, so it's the D-series size one, right?
No matter what you do.
That's right.
The, um. Steve six-hundred. Is the lighting plan, you don't need to look at it, but I'll, I'll walk you through it. Uh, what we show is, um, this is the photometric plan, right, so we show the intensive lighting, you have a requirement. That, um, we cannot create more than a half a foot candle of spillage on neighboring property. The lights that are on, I'm sorry, the lines that are on our plan, we, we need to pick the half-foot candle limit. Uh, it goes right up to, but not over our southern property line.
And that says shown on sheet C-six-hundred?
C-six-hundred.
Is that the bottom, bottom graphic, right?
That's correct, yeah, the bottom.
Just tell me when I'm looking at them.
Oh, I see, okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna show you on the, on the plan here. So you guys have this sheet, where you're gonna notice is these circles here. This, um, line is labeled, if you look right there, it says zero-point-five F C, that's a half a foot candle. That is, um, that is your organs limit. So that shows us inside the parking lot is brighter than a half a foot candle, and once you cross that line, it's dimmer than a half a foot candle. So that line follows our parking lot, the edge of our parking lot goes out into Smith Street, so it's right up to that property line, it's not over, so it's in performance with your organs.
First question, why are there no lights there now?
That's a great question.
Alright, second question, do you need to put in lights?
That's a loaded question, I advocated for it.
I didn't mean it that much.
Third question, do the lights be on a timer? Oh, yeah, no, the, the lights, they're not gonna be on online.
No, I didn't have that question.
Yeah.
So, so you're proposing lights because you think that it would. Create a safer condition given this use, right? You're not just putting it on the plan because you're required to put it on the plan and upgrade it, you actually want the lights.
Well, you do require it.
I understand.
But I also advocated for it.
Okay, so, and how did you determine where you were gonna place the poles? Because my immediate reaction to placing the poles to the River Road side and coming back. Is that regardless of what the plans show, the spillage in the direction of the houses is more likely than if you were to put the poles on the inside and blow them towards River Road.
Well, we, we have, alright, so, first of all. How did I determine where to put them? We always start with the driveways, like the driveways.
Okay.
That left a gap in the parking lot, so we placed a pole in the middle to make up for the gap, so that's how we picked the location. If we put them on the south side adjacent to the neighbors, you'll get spillage onto the neighboring properties. You also, I don't think have room to put the poles there.
Yeah, it's tight set to the pin.
So I wanted to get these poles further away and have the light angled down, there are shields in these lights. You know, that's why we have this photometric plan to show that half-foot.
So they're three hundred and sixty degrees, I'm sure they have them in a directional fashion as well, right? So if you would, if you were able to find room on the other side, would it not be possible to then direct them with a confirmed no spillage backwards?
Good, I'm not aware of any lights that have literally zero cutoff at the pole. It will go backwards a little bit, and with the tight space we have there, I imagine we'll have more than a foot candle, more than a half-foot candle going out to the neighboring property.
Okay, I think we should spend. Time understanding it, and I, I'm sure we can hear from everyone with regard to it. But if the sensitivity to this issue for me in particular is that we're in a residential zone.
Yeah.
And so the other commercial that we, that we've dealt with at the planning board level, in my experience. The, the lighting's very, very significant, so I just, I just wanna flag it as significant, but we could certainly move this outside out for now.
Yeah, so this is, this is only three lights, one of them's pointing closer to, to River Road. Uh, the one, if, if the, the one light that's in the middle of parking lot, that was the only light there. You, you would hardly get any light at the property line. So, you know, it's, it's really just the safety thing.
Just one, we, we need three lights, given the fact that there are no lights there now.
Fine. Is, is it because the business operates after dusk?
Well, let me ask you this, would you guys prefer this business operate with no lights?
Well, I, 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 I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna conclude anything. But the truth is that it's dark at five o'clock this time of year. Yeah, I I don't know that it's necessarily nighttime use. It's just late afternoon use in the right weather and in the right season, you know.
I'm just thinking, cause you do two and not three, that's.
If you do two. It it would be better than nothing and, you know, I I'd be okay with that. You'll have a dark spot somewhere, not completely dark, but you know, darker than you would normally provide.
You said there's two streetlights right out front on River, right?
Yes.
And what kind of light is that? Is is there footprint of their light shown on your plan?
They are not modeled.
And if it was, would it doesn't light up the lot at all? Yes.
I think it does.
Yes, from. It does, which not adequately, but yes.
Well, go home that way and take a look. Um, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Mr. Fisher, um, on the west side, do you know if there can be any recess lights under the the drive thru? Cause you alluded to that there might be uh employees walking out of the door there.
Good point. I do not, there is no sight lights there. If there is architectural, you know, like residence.
Something small underneath.
Probably, yes. So there's a door there, you're gonna hear, so I'm sure there'll be a light by the door. Yes. Also, since it's covered and it's a pass through, it's probably a security thing as well. You want a little bit of lighting.
Right.
Okay. Alright, so I got through refuse, keep going? Okay. Yeah, got through lighting. Alright, landscaping, so um. This is another one. Landscaping wasn't originally considered when we started looking at this property, but after going through some design iterations. Um, the appy decided that they would like to aesthetically enhance the property with new lights. To start, there is a large area with the landscape. Yeah, okay. So to start, on the western end of the uh River Road frontage, there's an existing evergreen tree there. Uh, it's not in the best shape. Um, it doesn't look that great. It's also rather large, close to the building, close to the neighbor's house. Um, so what we're looking to do is replace that tree, take it out and replace it with a more appropriate species there, which in this case, we're showing a grape myrtle.
And would you show the site triangle to make sure that that complies with um?
Yes. National standards. Yes. Yeah.
That's L I on the plan?
That's the L I, correct.
That's an inch in driveway, so. That's maybe I was talking about with the visibility.
Okay, so. Alright, the next thing is your ordinance uh requires street trees to be spaced between thirty and fifty feet along the frontage. Uh, on this plan, we actually conform with that except for. Uh, the driveways, obviously, and in front of the building. And and the concept there is, and I always advocate for this. That visibility of the business from the street, I feel is very important. So we didn't wanna block this, the uh building. There's not a lot of space to begin with, um, you know. Probably by dimension, it would be one tree on the hill, but yeah, in front of the building, we didn't wanna put a tree, but otherwise, on the west, western side and the eastern side of the building. We comply. And then. We provided landscaping in front of parking everywhere we could, which is uh a requirement of your ordinance. Uh, the only two parking spaces that we couldn't do that for are the ADA space and the employee parking space. Because both of those spaces are driveways, so we couldn't put anything in front of those. Um, we are adjacent to residential properties to our south and our west. Uh, the existing curb in the parking lots close to the property line, we have that existing six foot fence that is there. And that uh helps provide that visual separation. Our neighbors to the south all have pretty considerable vegetation, and there's a, there's also an accessory structure, I think a detached garage up there. Um, and that's all along our common property line, so that helps enhance the buffer between the uses in that area. Uh, the western half of the property allows for some landscaping. Uh, there is substantial existing vegetation by the southeast corner of the property, and we're proposing that that should remain. And then we're proposing some additional screening along the western property line, right adjacent to that former uh teller window. So that's all gonna provide functional and visual separation between the Atkins property and our residential neighbors. Not to mention the neighborhood is accustomed to a commercial use on this property, again, because it started operating in the back center between nineteen seventy and nineteen seventy-one. Now signs. Uh, we're proposing, there is an existing sign out front. We're proposing to uh replace it almost in time. Uh, with a sign that follows your B one standards and outline. So for reference, your B one zone permits freestanding signs up to twenty-five square feet. The existing sign is twenty-one point four square feet. It's eight feet wide and it's about thirty-two inches tall. The proposed sign, we're just proposing to make it a little bit taller, actually lower, cause we're gonna hold that top elevation, but. Um, it'll be about thirty-seven and a half inches high, so that gives us the twenty-five square feet. And enables us to put the two tenants on that side.
So the bottom of the sign would be reduced by five and a half inches.
Correct.
Or or enlarged, if you will.
Correct.
Can you, can you identify the location of the sign on the on the type plan?
The existing sign, it's actually, it should be shown on the plan, but it's right in front of the center of the building.
And what's gonna be the height from ground level to the bottom of the sign, what's the sign you'd like to install is is in the back, so.
So um, your ordinance requirement to the top is twelve feet. So that's what we have, this twelve.
That's the limit.
Yeah, I'm gonna work backwards. So your your limit is twelve feet. So what we would like to do, obviously, is. You know, since we're making the sign a little thicker, go up, but we can't, cause your ordinance says twelve feet, so we're gonna go down. So thirty-seven, twelve feet minus thirty-seven and a half inches, give you your bottom clearance?
Just to clarify real quick, um. Again, we're in a residential, so this is specific to if it was in a business.
I'm gonna give you more detail on that, yes.
So, so there's a variance right off the bat for having a sign as it exceeds uh four feet in height. And.
I think it's two square.
Two square feet, yeah. That's the variance, and then their design is not only about new, it's in addition, but it shows that it would comply if it wasn't a business.
I I wanna make sure we get to the to the point of my questions. So it sounds to me as if you're gonna have at least eight feet clear underneath the sign that you propose. From the ground to the bottom of the sign.
Yes.
My issue with sight lines to the road.
Yeah.
Um, and so this was a huge issue at Acme with regard to having that sign in a location. Where the car is pulling onto River Road, you could see who was on the sidewalk, pedestrians and bicycles. And so it seems to me that at that height, that you're clear, all those sidelines are clear.
You're right.
Um, the the issue, a- as you pointed out, Mr. Grisso, is the conflict of the entire implication. In that it's here today, if we evaluate it based on the fact that everything's a variance, it looks, it looks one way. And I think that the assessment of delta between what's there and what's proposed. It just creates a different view of it, um, just at a macro level.
Difference between what's there, you're gonna come down another.
Five and a half inches.
Yeah. And hold the top one.
So we have a, Chairman, Board members, we have a sample of what the sign would look like. Um, so we could remark this, uh, how that says eight or eight fourteen now?
Is it backlit, is it neon?
Which is the requirement you're.
What is it?
Externally lit.
Externally lit.
Yeah.
So your, your shining lights, two or from both directions.
Yeah, that hasn't been determined where those lights are mounted, but that's exactly right. It will be externally.
Are those the existing lights? I think that there's, yeah, there today.
Are they on the ground? So, yeah. Yeah, I don't know if they'll stay in your place. I don't know how that's gonna work with this sign, so. You don't allow internally lit, then fine.
I guess not.
No, there's, well, there's a typo on on uh. Seven hundreds, so the one you're holding in your right hand, that's our sign. A A fourteen, A fourteen.
Uh, what about the proposal for a second tenor upstairs? No signage?
That's, that's the bottom of the sign, Chairman.
That's a separate tenor?
Yes. That's the, so the Duffy um. Branding there on the sign, the bulk of it, that's the downstairs tenant.
Yeah.
And then the other one, stay well, I think it says, that's the upstairs.
So the the black ink is the first floor tenant and the gold ink is the second floor tenant. Black ink first floor, gold ink second floor.
The sign is gonna be in the same location that it is today. We're gonna hold that same front yard setback. We're gonna, like I said, we're gonna hold that same height to the top. Each tenant will have space. We talked about that. It's gonna be externally lit. Um, and we do have to request variances for the sign area height, because again, we're in residential zone. But functionally, I'll talk more about this in planning testimony, functionally, we're really a part of the B one zone. Uh, we're also requesting variance relief to place a sign on the main entry door, which faces north. It does not face River Road. Um, the reason for that sign, that's actually shown on the plans too. That's on C seven hundred. Uh, it says window sign, door. All this is a sign mounted on the door. It really acts as a wayfinding sign to draw people when they're in the parking lot to go through the proper door.
Will you show the location on the?
Yeah, we can add that to the plan, no problem.
And and you said it faces north and not towards River?
It it would face north, right? So the door, the entry door is right there.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah, yeah.
That's facing east.
It's not east, north is River.
It's northeast, if you want to split it.
So we got many to split, so.
Is it facing River Road or is it facing Smith Street?
It's facing Smith Street.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, better way to categorize.
Yeah.
Faces Smith Street, just principle, there we go. Um. And that's it for site orientation, engineering, all that kinda stuff.
Okay, uh, it's time of thought. And one of the things that bothers me about carrying applications is that you've got people that are engaged, that are here tonight. Um, that may well wanna speak to or ask questions with regard to the testimony we just heard. Uh, and as much as I recognize it'll break before a little bit, um, I'm gonna audible. And I would like to open to the public, uh, to see whether or not we have any questions about the issues that we talked about just now. Um, I don't wanna get into the stuff you haven't put on yet. I only wanna ask if anyone has any specific questions about the issues that we touched on over the last half hour. I I I recognize your hand, hold on one second. So I'm gonna ask everybody to step forward. We're gonna ask for your name for the record. You've already been sworn in. The questions have to relate to the testimony that Mr. Fisker has just put on. Uh, recognizing that we're not gonna finish tonight, so there's gonna be other testimony and other opportunities to comment. Uh, but that's how I wanna try and channel this stuff.
Well, I'd like to. Arford, it's spelled A R F O R D. I live fourteen colonial court, that's. Block thirty-three, lot uh, well.
Our, our, hold on, one second, can we hear one microphone to see good where he is?
I've never told, had anybody tell me they can't hear me.
To the table, if you don't mind. Thank you, just to be sure.
Second house sitting on Colonial?
Correct.
Right behind the bank.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, well, a couple things I'd like to uh clear up. Uh, you say that, I was wondering how many employees you're gonna have on the first floor and how many employees are gonna have on second floor?
We haven't gotten there yet on the testimony.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So we only can talk about the things we've already discussed, right?
You're gonna hold it? You're gonna hold the conference until next time.
Okay, uh, just to, I don't always get the mail as fast as I might. When's the next time going to be?
Well, we haven't talked about that yet, but we have a reorganization meeting in January, so this is likely gonna get carried to February.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward.
Emily Steiner, S T E I N E R. I cannot tell you what lot I am, but I can say that I am directly behind that fence. That fence.
Picture there.
Twenty Colonial Court.
Third house, fourth house on the right.
Oh, you're across the street.
No, I'm on Colonial Four. Here's my house right here, the Harvard roof.
I'll I'll point here, so you guys know.
Thanks.
Lot fourteen?
She is.
Yes.
Lot fourteen.
Got it.
Okay. So with the, in regards to the fence, is that going to be replaced because it is like dilapidated?
We haven't, we haven't heard anything about that yet. But, but I'll tell you this, in the sixty-eight resolution, there's a requirement that the fence be constructed and maintained. And I'm sure that the applicant's aware of that, but we may have to wait till next time to find it for sure.
Okay.
But certainly it's on, it's on the, it's on the radar.
Yeah, that's all, that's like a, you know, the whole thing about the lights. You know. It's hard to say, um. How much light is going to be. Coming into somebody's home, but like I have a ranch style home and I have three glass sliding doors that go along the back of my house. And when the bank was lit up, when I first moved here in twenty nineteen. The light on the drive thru. Was so bright going into my back window that like, I was just like using it and had to put so much stuff up.
Can you help Mr. Fisker see on his plan about where on that building that light was?
So you're weird. Where was still the offensive?
My room is right here. And it was shining so definitely into my.
So the western drive thru is the one that had a light.
Northwest corner of her house.
Yeah.
We can make sure that that doesn't happen. Anything else?
No. There's so much more, but we didn't touch on it, thank you.
Sorry. Anyone else? I got one in the back. Come on forward, please. And your name is?
Bruce Blazer, five two three River Road. Um, basically, they have lights. That eliminate the flag pole. And the question I have is, you said they were like, the lights were gonna put on timers. What are the hours of operation of the business? Because these lights on flag pole are on all the time.
So we didn't, we didn't get to that. Um, Mr. Atkins asked the question about timers, um, alleviating concerns.
Right.
Um, I think that hearing a second comment with regard to lights that we've talked about. I think maybe what we need to do is get an assessment of where existing lights are, making sure that we know which ones we wanna keep. And then we can speak to it a little bit more specifically.
That's my asking, because the spotlights. Flag pole is here and the spotlights are like this, but they do not have a. Cover on them, and otherwise it will shine across River Road. It will actually light up my living room.
Could you show us, Ms. Blazer, where where you are on on this exhibit to your right? Okay, give us a lot number, Jason?
What, lot twenty-seven?
Lot twenty-seven, block twenty-five.
Okay. And the light on the flag pole here, it just comes right across. Because it had no shade on.
No, that's a, that's a flag law thing.
Flags up all the, it's flags up twenty-four hours a day. Then the light's supposed to be on, cause all of it's dark. Regardless of what your business hours are, so that's, that's up to them whether they wanna keep their flag up.
As far as the signs go, the only, the only wording on the sign is P S D bank. With all these words on that sign, it's probably looks so much more commercial.
Thank you. There is, Mr. Atkins, there is um requirements with regard to font and sizings and things like that. That that's all been baked into your proposal in terms of um, what's there?
I I don't know. This uh, this was just produced today.
Okay.
So I I haven't, this is the first time I've seen it. I haven't seen it before today. So we're just giving gross dimensions at this point.
Okay. Alright, uh, anyone else already? Please.
My name's Melissa, M E L I S F A, Othasky, O S O F S K Y. Um, with regards to the driveway, sorry, oh, twenty-two Colonial Court.
Can you uh? Come on to these here. So block uh thirty-three, lot fifteen, lot fifteen. Got it.
In regards to the driveway, I'm sure you're familiar with John Laurie Salon. So a lot of the employees and the patrons that go there also park on Smith. So Smith keeps extremely congested and also very dangerous for the neighborhood kids who walk across to go to Acme and Dunkin' Donuts and all. The Acme Park upon businesses there. So that also should be taken into consideration.
Takeaway being that there's not a lot of availability on Smith Street. And there should be some sensitivity given to whether or not this property is gonna be able to house the cars that it's going to attract.
Yeah, and that that was a heavy discussion between me and the applicant during the design.
Thank you.
Of the site, and as I mentioned, when I was talking about parking, we feel that the parking we show on the plan will support their uses. And and also, I'll highlight this. If you go strictly by your ordinance, we're re-spaces. And, and also, I'll highlight this, if you go strictly by your ordinance, where re-space is short, it's pretty close. If you go by the reality of the situation, there's a chunk of the upstairs that cannot be occupied, and if you use that map, we can fly with the park.
That was the four hundred and fifty square feet.
We were on the four hundred and fifty-ish square feet, correct.
But if we go by the ordinance, it's residential, right?
Not for parking, pardon, you're right, it's owned residential, not commercial, but parking is a part of it, if they go by square foot of the merchants.
Can I use the square footage of the as renovated second story?
I'm gonna let you, I know the total square footage, because that's how I calculated parking, but he can break it down for you.
What's the anticipated user of the second story? Who is this, uh, there on the sign?
You're, you're gonna hear more about what they do.
Okay.
Yeah.
And look, it's just the difficulty in trying to, trying to space it out.
Yeah, what you're gonna hear, when you hear more about that use, it's very benign.
Yeah.
See, these, yeah, they're different, uh, Chairman, Board Members, just so it's not any great mystery here. It's, um, it's wellness coaching, which would include uh bar sessions, uh, I, I believe that's a combination of uh Pilates. And uh dancing, I think it was originated in the United Kingdom in the late nineteen fifties, getting history lessons. Um, can't say I'm a student of it, but um breathing. Ricky, Ricky Energy, Health and Nutrition, so that's the type of kind of wellness that we're talking about. Again, it's going to be, you'll, you'll hear testimony.
Is the second story gonna be separately partitioned from the first?
It will be.
Is there a separate entrance?
It will have.
And, and.
We will, again, I, I apologize, we just haven't had. Haven't had the moment to get to Mr. Anderson's testimony, I promise his plans will reflect all of that. It, 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 it will be more likely one on one, but there may be some small classes as well, again, all that testimony will come out.
But the user of the second floor is intended to use the second floor, the open space on the first is not gonna be accessible or used.
Correct, two separate spaces, so, so, I mean theoretically, if I wanted to have my northern office in the upstairs. Because again, we haven't signed up this proposed tenant, then I could have my office in the upstairs. And we'd have nothing to do with Mr. Duffy's fitness, personal fitness studio.
Could be a number of different.
Could be a number of professional uses that are otherwise, would otherwise be analogous to permitted uses in the business, so.
Got it, right.
Okay. Um.
I know we're at that, we're at that hour.
We're at that hour where we need to decide how to use the, the next ten minutes wisely.
I can't start and finish Mr. Anderson.
I can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, does anybody else have any comment with regard to Mr. Fisker's testimony? Okay, I, I'm gonna suggest that we move on to CCH and see whether or not there's.
Well, but, go ahead, uh, I shouldn't bother. I didn't get into planning it.
Okay, so fair enough, that, that wouldn't.
Yeah.
We don't wanna leave.
Whether, whether she's complimentary or rebuttal, we haven't presented that, of course, that part of the case yet.
Yeah.
And again, I, I, I'm sorry that it's, that it's going to be segmented, but again, because this is a use variance. And because the proofs are so extensive, we wanna make sure we make a thorough record for you and for the applicant. And for frankly, the members of the neighborhood who are here one way or the other, so they can hear everything that is to be said.
Yes, and I just wanna clarify that since CCH was unable to generate a written report.
Yeah.
I thought that a summary overview, but you're absolutely right, it's out of sequence and not right.
As opposed to a summary overview, can we get if there are any. Points from CCH's point of view that are not covered in the materials that were presented?
With regard to what Mr. Fisker just testified to?
No, well, sort of like. Our engineer's letter says, I'd really like to see these things testified to.
You know what, here's what we're gonna do, because CCH is just about to get an extra couple of points, so it doesn't matter, I don't think we need to try and squeeze it in. I think we're gonna have an opportunity more time to actually take a look at it.
I just, I just mean for the applicant to be able to use their time between now and whenever they're carried to. To address if there's anything.
I, I agree with that.
You know what I'm saying, my.
Ideally, I'd like them to know what the issues are, so they, but I, I don't see how we can do it in a, in a way that's gonna work. Yeah, our planner can always have access to the applicant's.
Okay.
Planner, and to share any additional concerns, so that there's, there's your, let me, maybe pull in February without, come back in a bit.
Yeah.
Right, I, I.
And I would say Chairman, Mr. Shabetti, to your, to your comment, so it's not unusual, right, for um, a, just like we received two reports. From, from CME, that we would receive the report, and just like we responded to that report, we would respond to the planner's. So, so there, there would appear to be, in fairness, there would, to the comment, which I think is appropriate, there would be for that.
More than adequate time or doctor.
To respond to the, the planner's comments.
Yeah. Um, okay, so, so you're good with where you are?
I'm good with where we are right now, Chairman.
Okay, so, Mr. Akins, when, when you come back, do you have some clarity from the county in terms of the parking situation?
Yeah, so my expectation, Doctor, would be that, uh, I don't know if it'll be on the county's agenda for, it's coming Monday, but certainly, uh, beginning of January. It'll be the January eighth meeting, not, not later than that. So if we're coming back in February, I, I think we'll be adequate time to get feedback from the county.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, so with regard to carry, uh, um, there's sort of a loose. Tradition of not scheduling and stuff on the U P. Um. The reality is that there's not stuff to do then. All right then. Um, Sheila, what does, what, what does our known agenda look like right now in terms of January, February month? Are they all open? For uh completed applications that are either scheduled or waiting to be scheduled?
Um, that is something we're gonna discuss this evening, there's three applications that have. Um, that are ready to be scheduled.
Mr. Akins, you good with February?
I'm good with February, but of course, if there were an opportunity in January, you won't be there. When is the reorg date, Chairman?
Fourth.
The fourth?
I'm gonna suggest we go to February, and I'm gonna suggest we keep February clear except for you.
I understand.
And I think we're gonna take the top, the bottom, for the night, and we're gonna get through this. Um, and I just don't know what, what's gonna happen in January, and the last thing I wanna do is stretch it out longer than we need to. Um, so I think it'd be better to just realistically second one to February. Um, at this point, the, the anticipated February date is what, Sheila?
We're first?
First Thursday?
Yeah, I'm feeling it. I did that, yeah, my head.
So. Do I have confirmation?
Yeah.
Okay.
February first, Chairman?
So here, so here's, here's what we gotta do, we, we've gotta use that date. That date doesn't become official until we reorg in January, which no reason for that, it changed, I don't anticipate it. For some reason it does, then we're gonna have to renotice, we're gonna have a problem, we'll fix it, uh, I don't anticipate that. Um, because we're first Thursday, except for conflicts, and the conflict we've already worked through in terms of projecting what our dates are gonna date, so it's ninety nine percent. Um, and so I'll make a motion to carry the, uh.
Wave any time requirements?
Wave the time requirements provided is also with necessary letter.
Uh, proposal is to carry to uh February first. Uh, it's subject to the time to extend time to add. What's that? Without, without the need for any additional.
No further renotice.
No, no, no further notices will be sent, the meeting that we're talking about is February first, twenty twenty four. If that meeting is not on that night, there will be notices sent, because we will have to change.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Board Members.
We didn't, we didn't vote on it yet, but I feel good about it. Um, I made the motion, I'm waiting for a second, we'll call.
Mr. Gudrathne?
Yes.
This is DeAngelo.
Yeah.
Mr. Richway?
Yes.
Mr. Gortai?
Yes.
Dr. Lawper?
Yes.
Zella?
Yes.
Mr. Later?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Happy holidays, well, thank you, everybody, thank you.
Okay, we do have. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our administrative items, uh, what do we have with regard to that?
Minutes from the last meeting, I was not attending that, um, somebody willing to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Anybody have any comments in there?
Anybody reviewed minutes?
Yeah, motion approved. Okay.
Yep.
Hi, I think I need to say an hour. Uh, Mr. Richway?
Yes. Yep. Yes.
Did I?
Yes.
Mr. Later?
Yeah. That is the only piece of administrative item I have, except for comments.
Well, I wanna discuss, I wanted to discuss tenants, um, because what's happened is over the last several months, particularly with these Ds. Um, and with the introduction of Sheila into the process, um, there has been too much stress. About who's gonna be here and, and whether we've got the correct amount of people. In fact, this application was here in October, and we did not have enough people, no, not this application, the Ryan application. Was here, they were here with all their professionals, and we were unable to proceed. Um, this costs a miss to these application, uh, to these items. Um, historically, the zoning board has had near perfect dependence. Uh, historically, board members have had repeated problems making it to, to, to meetings. Um, have, have, have withdrawn from the board when it's trouble. Uh, no one has that kind of problem, but number one, we need improved communications when people can't be here. I need people to identify a conflict in advance, it needs to be invited, it needs to go through Sheila. Peter and I could be copied, or whoever Chairman and Vice Chair are next year, so that there's, there, there's a clear understanding when there's a conflict. There are situations where things come up at the last minute, and in order for everybody to be able to have those family emergencies. We need to be able to establish consistency with people being here all the time. We have two extra members, which seems like a lot, but you get a refusal, you get two recusals, and then somebody's absent, and you get a D. And everything gets messed up. Um, just take the comment for what it's worth. Um, I wanna do better in twenty twenty four, because we owe them the best we can do. Which by the way, was exactly what we gave everyone tonight, so please don't misunderstand me. Um. That cover it?
Yeah, people read your emails, please, um, emails have gone out and gone unanswered. I'm a stickler for emails, I live on it, but uh, please read your emails and respond at any time.
I don't use the Fairhaven zoning board address, and so I just use my work address, and, and it, it exposes me to discovery requests and things like that. But as a practical matter, my work address, I see every few hours, if not instantaneously. If, if that's what you need to do, then do both email addresses, um, and just stay in touch.
Yeah, for those who weren't, weren't here when we, when we did the zoning board addresses, the reason was. So in case a legitimate or a legal issue came up that they asked to see your emails, you wouldn't have to expose your personal emails. If you don't wanna use it, don't use it, but please look at the one that you're gonna, that you're gonna use and respond to it. That's it.
When we set the, we set the meeting schedule in January, it's in stone. And to me, it goes on my calendar, and I schedule around it, I can't do stuff with kids that night, I can't take a meeting that night. That's the commitment to the rules. Um, and if there's other things that interfere identified in advance, let's do the best we can. But if there's, if there's multiple absences, um, you know, you should be asking yourself whether or not there, there's enough time to, to do this. Yep, yep, uh, I still see some, uh, some stragglers out there, so are there any comments or questions for the public?
Groupies.
We'll open to you.
Your long bear, um, great job this year, just wanna say you guys did a phenomenal, seemed a phenomenal work, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for. Okay, anything further? Thanks a lot, everybody, uh, uh, motion proposed all in favor. Alright.
That's W.